This conference will now be recorded.
All right, first up is the adoption of the agenda, which pretty much all it is is discussion of budget today. I'm trying to have a motion to do that.
Do we need to make an addition to discuss the boat ramp?
Yeah, that probably did just the.
Okay, so we'll just add, we just start off with that if you want to.
Yeah.
So we're adding the boat ramp discussion. It should be our first topic. With that addition, anybody?
I've got a question about the. Is this profit of just. Talk about the boat ramp and what.
Yeah, I mean, this is just the stuff I've really noticed, so.
If you have any legal questions, actually refer to another meeting. We find out whatever legal aspects of the question you may have can be rendered.
I don't know whether it's proper to put it here or if they're meeting, so I'll just bring it up. I think he needs to go about your what you do in the garbage pickup and leave them this pickup. They find it out of down front as opposed to a line item. Belly. I did some looking into that. That is incredibly complicated for us. To go that route because one, we'll have to reduce the taxes considerably. But I don't want to pay much to be in the budget. I can use a target here.
Yeah, we can discuss that. It's as part of the process. Anybody else want to add anything? I mean, that can be part of, well, because it's part of the budget. And then if somebody, if you wanted to make an action, we can bring it up at a future meeting. Okay, all in favor? All right, first up is discussion about the boat ramp.
So yeah, following up from that email chain we had the other day. Just looking at the number of passes for residents at Cape Cod are at, we had 200 boat ramp passes. Nearby towns, 134 boat ramp passes, out of area, 17 boat ramp passes. So there was 500 issued total and, you know, looking at this a little bit more, and I didn't realize this was the practice until I think it was like last week that we brought that up. Currently, there's a couple of things I think could be maybe tightened up or looked at and I think should be considered. Right now, it's the same cost regardless of how many passes somebody gets. Like, this, all right, so I'm sorry, it's not the same cost regardless of how many passes somebody gets. So somebody could get four passes, the first pass they, if I get the resident, they pay 100. And then Heather, what's the cost for everyone after that?
Residents can have the two passes on their $100 and then they can have additional one. Well, they can have an additional two, each one of those is $5.
So I think part of why there's so many passes that have been issued is, I mean, if it's five bucks to get a pass versus 100, I think there's a lot of people who are probably utilizing that opportunity. That might be an area to look at there, but also something that we talked about in house is just when somebody sells their boat, a lot of times they're leaving that sticker on the boat trailer and they're not removing it. So the new practice is going to be if somebody sells a boat, they need to bring that old sticker in and switch it out for a new sticker as opposed to it being kind of like an honor system. I think that's also kind of where some of these passes are going. But I know, I think it's important to point out that's, this doesn't mean there's 500 people that are going to utilize this boat ramp. It means that there's 500 passes that went out. It could be replacement passes that people, you know, sold a boat, got a new boat, got a new sticker. Or it could be people who got multiple, you know, passes and you could have people with, you know, three or four passes and that only represents one person. So, and obviously they can't use, you know, all four passes at the same time at the boat ramp. So I think that's important to point out, but I think that could be an area where we can kind of tighten up a little bit. And I think that would probably reserve some of those passes and make it a little bit a better process. So just some sort of analysis looking at it.
Somebody comes in and they need a replacement pass. Is that even three as well? Well, you said replacement pass. Why would somebody need a replacement? Well, they sold a boat and then in the past with the boat.
Do we have, I mean, like a resident can get a four. I'm not a voter, I don't have a vote, but we have three and four votes. I mean, they need that many passes for? That normal, I mean, we have.
But I'm going to have to check because the other boat is so small.
My thoughts and what I put in emails, everything, my thoughts only in general is I don't want to see us issue so many passes that that place gets overwhelmed. Put out more than what it can accommodate. But at the same time, I have a problem with the town resident not being able to get a pass, but giving out so, so many passes to non-residents. I mean, I think if we need to, if we need to look forward, if we're going to put a cap on it and we're going to put a cap on it, we're not going to issue, I'm just going to say 500. That's the number. 500 is the maximum. Then we should also, within that 500, put a cap on only 150 or 200 or whatever on the non-residents so that residents can get them. I just have a problem with residents coming in to get a pass while we're already sold out for the year because, you know, we sold 250 people on Cedar Point or, you know, wherever.
We're not, we're not sold out. We only, it's just that we only ordered 500 stickers. There's still only 350 people with boats that have actually bought those stickers. So we got 150 stickers that are essentially free or $5 or whatever. So, you know, if there's still only 350 people. Town side and out of town things. I mean, that's what, 200 residents and 150 non-residents are buying those things at a nice price. Or another hundred.
Yeah, I agree. It's all about stickers.
Yeah, I think it's much more of a stickers issue than it is, you know.
Yeah.
And so I think that's, and the only thing I'd kind of caution if, if there's a desire to limit the number of passes for other municipalities and other areas is if we're going to utilize state grant funding to dredge out there, I would caution against that because we would be limiting access, which would potentially negate our ability to collect those grant funds. So that would just be a kind of a cautionary thing there because I know there's some stipulations about it being for public access. And I think while we have it right now is fine, but if we get into like a specific set amount, it could jeopardize our ability to obtain that funding, so.
Something we could, could do is maybe have a staggered application process where let's say we open it up for town residents only the first two weeks. That way, only town residents can apply or get these permits for the first two weeks. And that way, after that, what's left over, we can open up for everybody. And then somebody who's late in the town could also have an opportunity. That's just a thought I had.
Do the, out of town people that get the stickers, they pay $100, right? I'm sorry, $200. So they get two passes. Is that all involved?
No, they get two passes for $205.
I think that's what they could change.
Yeah.
I mean, eight or four, I mean, those, that's definitely.
Yes, each sticker should be.
The thing we should be doing, like, is 100, $200 for out of town. Maybe another $100 or $50, $70 for a different set.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, I think that's where we need to increase. I think that would stop limiting the number. We still offer to do them for state purposes, but at the same time, we're gaining funds more for the town. The P D. Grant Department, I think that's what we need to look at.
A couple of comments. First, on the overuse. The only time I pay to back away there almost every day to make a man alone. I think this year what I'll do, I'll actually do some counting, just so we can say. But it's only on, obviously, the holiday weekends that we have. Some of the weekends in the summer where you'll have this, other times that come. Most of the time, it's less than a quarter or half of all, so it's. You can go in, if you go anywhere in Port of Alamo or there later, if you go work, you can tell a lot of down here, those things are 100%. So I don't know that we really have an issue, but I do agree that maybe since this is paid. We collect the money, but give the general funds to pay for the expenses on it. We ought to first limit the number of outside passes. But I don't see limiting the people, the residents, from having a pass. So maybe make a recommendation on capping the number of outside passes. We get, we got 17 of the, the needs of all steadily going up over the year. We're starting to have way less number of people. I think last year we had about 475, 477, something like that. So we're up, we're up a few from last year, but that's not what we've seen for the last 10 years that we've been doing.
How many residents of Cape Cod have received one?
It's a handful. Neil Weeks, Mark Parrish. Matt Raymond, I know he's got four. The Richards have three, but they moved.
I just feel that should be the same price for every sticker regardless of how many boats you own because you're taking up the exact same amount of room, so to speak.
You mean, you're saying so much for the second one, but not between captain and people?
I own two boats. I should pay full price for both those stickers. I just feel that's, that's fair. That's just me.
Having operated a leisure ramp and come along with that. Comparing the two ramps to part of. 500 is definitely overused, is that property down there, you're down there for like 10 minutes. That ramp was leased and taxed and I think I can speak, Mr. King, primarily for the use of Cape Cod residents. It's grown to what it is today. Simply because it's a nice little cash pot for the town, but it's got down here. It's obviously too late to change it later this year, but we pay $250 a year at least, which I'm not advocating our citizen taxpayers pay that here. But $200 for out of towners is a part. I don't know what the answer is, but I want to make sure that our citizens are taken care of first. And regardless of your comment about paying full price for two boats, that's not what we do in Bay Shore. We do similar to what we do here. One resident pays $250, gets an extra sticker for that too. It's because a lot of people have two boats. My family's had two or four jet skis, which is a trouble. So I don't know what the answer is, but I want to take care of our citizens before we reach out to anybody. I just hang on, use that. So like, it's not appropriate. For our taxpayer to go down there and find a place to park a boat, that's a problem. And I understand generates about $38,000 net profit a year, but we've got to take care of our citizens first. Maybe you're delayed. Idea of delayed registration, given those citizens, maybe a month in advance or something, that put a cap on it. Put a cap on it now, give citizens a month first, give it for a do, I think that might be an option in rates, rates for the out of towners, which would help curb our usage.
Go ahead, say, I agree exactly with that. It kind of accommodated. Once we decide for sure what the rates are going to be for these, let's stay the same, whether we change it for, you know, residents, non-residents, so forth. I think we definitely need to put a cap on what's the maximum. And then I agree with you in that, opening up initially the citizens and, you know, get the word out. They've got a month where they get first dibs on it. Now, if they wait six months and do it, then that's on them, you know, they have the opportunity. But before we start selling it out to non-residents, I think we should, whether it's two weeks, whether it's a month, whatever, give our citizens first dibs on those passes and then what's left over, whoever comes in.
Yeah, I think if we could do a staggered process, like y'all were talking about, and then I was thinking, I mean, for the additional stickers, if you did it like kind of a tiered thing, so if you had for town residents, each additional sticker would be $25. For non-residents, like Cedar Point boat or Pelletier, it'd be $50 for each additional sticker. For other, that'd be 75 for each additional sticker. That'd be kind of the middle ground way to, you know, account for those additional stickers. That might help to keep the number of stickers down. And if we do a staggered process for two or three weeks, open that up just to town residents first and then, like y'all are talking about, open up to everybody after that. So I think that could be a good way to approach it, but that, and I think also limit it so that somebody sells a boat, we'll put it in the rules and everything and make sure it's clear. If they sell their boat and they leave that sticker on the trailer, they need to peel it off and bring it back. One thing I'm just, you know, I think this is kind of an honor system right now because, you know, you can get four passes per resident. I mean, what's to say if you're getting it for $5 that you don't give it to your buddy? And I mean, there could be some of that happening, you know.
My question I have too, Heather, Barbara, whoever, please, how do you verify that they have property on the chair? If they're, or however, the nature of the registrations won't read where they did, they're all in. How do you verify they have property here? It doesn't. That may be a way for somebody, scamming system. Although what you said, very bad, the point is that, it happens for five bucks. I mean, my God.
Oh, yeah.
Listen, I still provide some on that.
We already know that, Heather, as long as you mention, we know they did.
How do you verify that they have property on the same thing? Just type them the report.
Most of these people are reappearing, so we know now, we have checked. A lot of people don't know where they live, so we have to check. They think they live here, but they don't.
Yeah, you're right.
While, but that's not necessarily correct either because of things.
It's ours.
I can get the tax.
I'm sure there's several ways to do it. As far as owner of property, it's as simple as what property do you own to look at. And if you get a estimate, who's the owner of that property? People drive.
Other comments, summary. You know, this is a valid complaint. A local boat ramp that is controlled as opposed to a public ramp. I've been for boats in for all my life. I know what it's like. That's why people are willing, this is a valid complaint. I think Zach is representing good improvement. Somebody's heard all this. Why don't you make a proposal for us at the, for next meeting to address this? The only caveat, in support of denying a resident unless they miss the deadline, they pass. In other words, if we got to find the residents for the end, then I think they should all get a pass. If you would put something together, a proposal for us, covering all this discussion, we can handle it. Put it into a form of a motion at the next meeting.
Heather, when do we send out the letters and information? So how soon do we need to?
I usually go May and then we start on the boat.
Like mid-May or in the back?
For this coming year.
Okay, so we got time to change it all since then?
Yeah, I freaked out when I first saw it because I just skimmed through on my phone. I said, what? I missed getting my boat ramp. I called, sent Zach a message, man, maybe I misread it. And that's, that was my fault. I had a critical thing.
Yeah, I mean, the sooner the better. That way we can make sure it's all reflected. I mean, if y'all are open to that idea about, you know, the first pass being 100, additional passes 25, and then for local non-residents, you know, first pass being 200, additional passes 50. Other, that'd be first pass 300 and then additional passes 75. If they sell a boat, they have to bring their pass back in. If they don't bring their pass back in, I'd say that we charge them for. Because, I mean, what happens is like you sell a boat and you sell that trailer with it and it's got a sticker on there. That person's just going to go down there and use that sticker and they're just getting it free. So I think we're kind of getting, taking advantage of that sort of thing.
I agree with that. And then if we add it in there, we start something passes whenever, literally we start telling them, July 1 or mid-June or.
Mid-June, but they're not.
So what if we say?
Start earlier and just for town residences, let's say June 1.
Yeah, we'll start June 1.
A two-week, just town residences.
Are you still going to allow the residents to have?
I think that's fine. It's just, I think for each additional one and that.
Each one is going to be 25.
I think that would be a good.
That's what we do.
Sticker two, three.
Zero one sticker, one, 25. That keeps a lot of the, it's like somebody said, well, I got, what's this problem? Passing off one.
Now, do you make them do a separate sheet for that? I mean, that's something.
We have a sheet that they, they look all of the. Well, honestly, I'm going to be honest. I took the town's sheet and tweaked it to accommodate us over there when I was doing the bar ramp. And it's basically the same principle, but we do limit the amount of stickers. I think it's over. But we charge 250 for the initial sticker and then extra for the, which is good. But I take it one step further, Zach. I would bump that Cedar Point Pelletier, well, not, I bumped that thing up to 250. I mean, it's, 200 is a, you can get a piece of a little boat ramp down here. Like, you go to Cedar Point over here on Saturday, I say, oh, yeah. But 250, nothing. That privilege.
So 250 sounds good, I think. And you're saying additional 50.
Yeah.
And then for about past that, 375 additional.
Remember saying.
Yep.
How many others do we have? 17.
17.
Yeah.
That's, I think I have some game, a little price. This 17, maybe you spoke that in a little bit, as well as all of it.
350.
Same way you want to control it.
Say 350.
Two plus the 250, we definitely 350.
350.
And then would we say 75?
75 for additional. Right.
The time will take it.
Yes.
Do that, maybe next year.
I don't foresee us losing revenue as part of that.
One thing I see is losing be down the road when the county opens up that new boat ramp, who knows?
You're going to lose a lot of them.
But I think, I think the residents, they will still use this, for me especially.
Got to lay it down there on Saturday afternoon.
Well, 200, normally places, that's, that's supposedly the largest one.
Yeah.
Not in Val, was one of the largest. Only for all I have left.
Yeah. And it's like two and a half feet of water out there sometimes getting out of that. I'd use that boat ramp.
Which one's that?
And well, the dredge though.
We'll say maybe June 1 or June 18.
Yes.
Makes sense. Then they'll open up after that.
All right, so let's just recap what we got and we can go down and go ahead and make a deal today if y'all want to. So we're going to have a two-week advantage for our residents beginning June 1. So they're the only ones that can obtain permits and after that we open it up. And we're going to add, $25 will be the addition for in-town. And then 250 for the next level with an additional 50. And then out of county, 350 and $75 for addition. Is that what we agree on?
Are we going to eliminate that one free pass? Or the extra pass?
Nothing's free.
So that, I mean, so the $100 will get you one pass instead of two?
Correct. If you want additional one in-town, it'd be 25 bucks.
Like that's fair.
Okay.
They not eliminate it, but you're going to control it strategically.
All right. Yeah, and then we can, we can revisit it again, like Steve said, and see, see how it rolls. That's right. Do I have a motion to make it? Steve, a second, all in favor? But she carries five left. All right, thank you, gentlemen. And now on with the exciting part of the day.
Can I make a comment before we get into the?
Sure, go right ahead, Steve.
To visit revenue section part of the law, that's where money's coming. Maybe there's mine that we're ready to, that's possible. I don't know what's, that in the mind, without the revenue, nothing else. No way to start.
Well, we can do that. You're okay with that, Zach? That's the. Sure, go ahead.
You see it in line by line, a lot of stuff is repetitive. I really don't see the, what would be if you're line by line. I'll look at this overall, it's line by line. He needs to come to us and say it. This line, this is something different, something to be added, and with an explanation with it. Other than that, we can change, change what you talk about. What's what's required is for the line, I don't know for sure. I agree with Redd, we need to look, what we need to look at. The C I P or whatever we need to do to increase our volumes, but I mean, if we go line by line, we need to.
Well, I think if you look at how he's done it, there's, there's an explanation on the right. Those are the ones we need to probably stop and look at.
All I was going to say is I think we do live, I accept those questions about a certain thing. So 90% of them. We ask some questions on what happened. So I don't, we sat here and we went department by department, which I said, by, by, by what I said. No questions. You know, maybe hey, we, I had, you know, sound like, very foul, we own this much, it's our, it's our problem. It's our duty, it's just one of those, one duty we have, represent citizens. Just my take.
Somebody's operating over here. And it went all the way over here.
Did you hear that all the way over?
Yeah, I thought, I thought, I thought I was looking for Jim's phone. I was like, man, Jim, I didn't see him.
I said, right, that's the way we generally tell department by department. Points out any significant changes from last year and then if any commissioners got specific questions about any line, then do that.
Any other comments? We'll let Zach get started with the revenue.
All right. Alright. Is there any, I guess I'll ask, is there anything specific in the revenue section? I mean, I think most of the stuff we can look at what we did and what we're projecting in this fiscal year. I mean, same thing as what we talked about last time. A big unknown is on this local option sales tax. And how tax increases at other municipalities might impact what we're given for that. Also taken into account that so far this calendar year, they've had a banner year, I know, in January, February, March, for what they're bringing in in room occupancy taxes. So it's been a really strong year so far. I don't think it's gonna slow down, which is good news. So that should help hopefully offset some of the decrease that we'll see when other towns go up on their taxes. And I know there's quite a few municipalities that are doing it. Some are doing that just to generate more money for the municipality through the sales tax. So I think one of our neighbors is doing that same tactic by pulling their trash service and house to increase their tax rates so they can generate more sales tax revenue. So that's kind of one of those things that we'll just have to see what ends up getting passed by the other municipalities and what they adopt in their budget to know for sure. But I think we've been relatively conservative on that estimate. And I think, you know, we'll just kind of have to see how that one plays out. That's an unknown every year. In terms of the revenue off that forum, I think we're pretty solid on that. And I think we've been, you know, fairly conservative in our approach to all of these line items on here. So if you look at what we're projecting at the end of the year versus what we're budgeting, I think we're in pretty good shape. Now, just take any questions on the revenue section if there are any.
On the ad-alarm side, as far as the revowls and any protests they have is all that. We don't have to worry about that now as far as going forward or?
Yeah, believe all that settled for the rebow that they did. That got worked out by the Board of Equalization and Review last year. So I don't think there's any new valuations that came out. You know, and there's a couple of, as new businesses open up in the place of vacant businesses, I'm not sure. It's hard to tell, you know, is a gas station more valuable than a bank, how they're gonna value it? Or is a Starbucks gonna be more valuable than a bank? So that's usually in the, to the tune of a couple thousand dollars in revenue that comes in. So that's, it's kind of, you know, hard to predict some of those things. But we are seeing a pretty good rate of residential growth in the town. There's quite a few houses that are under construction right now. So we'll continue to see a little bit of an incremental increase as those houses are completed. So that's, that's good news there as well.
Okay. Mayor, I've got five questions to answer. Sure, go right ahead, Steve. This is a sort of informal moment to do budgets. Forty thousand dollars?
Yes, that's correct.
And you're budgeting three thirty-six? That's quite a bit of difference, but you explain. Now, bear in mind, I don't know of any municipality that's had a point making, I'm sure they're going up on taxes. So I don't see how you came to that figure. I think you're loaded.
Yeah, and I bumped it up a little bit. I just updated this version, but I think I put in there three fifty-nine, seven seventeen. I think that's a pretty good. So like, what we budgeted last year was three thirty-six, seven sixty-seven. I think if we're in that three sixty range and that could change some because you never know until other boards vote on whether they're gonna do a tax increase, you don't know for sure. But the thing is, you know, as other municipalities do it, you know, a penny in another municipality across the bridge is gonna generate something to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars per penny. So that's a pretty big impact. So it really depends on which municipalities do it, right? So for us, a penny generates thirty-eight thousand, you know, for across the bridge. If they do even a penny, I mean, we're talking five hundred thousand. So it's a much bigger impact. So we just have to watch which municipalities in Carter County are increasing to get an idea for how that's gonna impact us. And I mean, I know there's, I think Atlantic Beach is considering one. I believe Newport is, Cedar Point. So we'll just kind of have to see what happens with those. You know, Cedar Point's less of an impact because they don't generate as much off a penny. Newport, a little bit more of an impact. Atlantic Beach, that's a much bigger impact, just based off of their overall valuation and what they generate off of one penny. So it's... And that's, that's the flaw in this current method of distribution is that, I mean, there is no good way to predict, you know?
From all economic. Here, here's like, I'm supposed to be another boom. I don't know. I just think way low. This is my opinion. That affects entire budget now.
It does, yeah.
We don't have a chance to get it right, so. I don't know, just go on my speculation, right away to go. But anyway. Like I said, Red, you got an increase of forty-four hundred. Where's that come from?
The state employees credit union cash points ATM.
Also, you got sale of surplus assets, fifteen thousand.
Through the enterprise program, disposing of the vehicles that we have now. So that's what they're projecting for what they're gonna sell.
That's another problem here. We have not even voted on leasing. Adopting the leasing. You've got it in the budget that not, to my knowledge, voted on matching this CR, AWR grant that you've gotten and is in the budget. So is that, is that the proper way to do it?
I believe it is the proper way to do it. I mean...
So you're thinking the board commissioners will vote for all that?
I'm presenting a proposed budget and it's up to the board to provide direction. If that's, if that's not the route that we're going, then I'd ask that the board let me know so we can modify those figures.
Okay, and you got transfer from reserve seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four, which, which part of that is leasing? The grant? Summit costs, which we, you know, you and I talked about several months recently. We made a motion prior to this contract, so I'm assuming we paying them. So why are you dragging twenty-seven thousand dollars into the next budget year for the UDO landing?
We shouldn't be paying for services in the next fiscal year that have not been performed. And I'd say that from the contractual and legal standpoint, but also from what's allowed by state statute. We're not supposed to be paying for things that are coming up for the next fiscal year. We run the risk like, and I don't foresee this at all with summit. But let's say we just kind of check right now and pay summit for all the services. And then we get in the fall and they say, oh, you know, we're done, we're not doing anything else. I mean, then we'd have to, we'd have to go the legal route and try to sue them to reclaim those costs. I mean, also, we're not supposed to be paying for something in the next fiscal year, in this current fiscal year. So it, I know it makes the budget increase and I hate doing that. I mean, I really, I try to avoid that at all costs when we can. But you gotta think about it from the perspective that, yes, we did a budget amendment to pay for summit. But if we don't spend those funds in this fiscal year, they all roll back into the same pot of money. We're just pulling it back out. We're accounting for that change of going back into the same pot of money and then coming back out. That's how we have to do it. I understand that.
And this is not a stoplight, we're not speculating. This is a budget. And I'm just going to record that. I'm not going to vote for any budget that takes anybody out of our talents. And I'm not voting yes on a budget until we discuss the grants that you apply to all the tanks or equipment over there on the works that occupy the neighborhood. That's all I said. I'm not, I'm not so... I just totally disagree with revenue. What do you expect, Mayor?
Well, in budget, first of all, budget is an estimate. Your best guess of what you're gonna spend in the next year. You can't always nail everything. And then we have things as simple as a budget amendments throughout the year to correct things that don't come out right. Having a underestimated revenue was always good at the end of the next year. So I don't probably have any issues. The, the one question I had is that the... I don't remember where the ABC product distribution, that's a pretty, pretty big chunk there. What's the basis for that?
Just based on what we're projecting for the year end, this year at a hundred twenty-five thousand. And that has continued to go up each year. And I think as you look at like the room occupancy rates and what they're bringing in that room occupancy tax, you look at what's coming in for the local option sales tax revenue. You know, there's a lot of people that are in this area that's driving those ABC revenues. So we feel pretty confident with that number. You know, I think just based on history, I mean, it's continued to go up. Utilization of that ABC store continued to increase. So, you know, we're, we're taking twenty-five thousand dollars below what we're projecting this year and that's what's in the budget, that hundred thousand dollar total. I think we're on pretty solid footing with that one. Because there's, I don't think the consumption of alcohol's slowing down at all by any means. I think people are buying just as much as they have been at the ABC store, if not more. And I think, especially when people are getting back to normal, coming down here to vacation and stuff like that, I foresee that we probably would see a pretty substantial amount of revenue going on at the ABC store, so.
While I was trying to go into this budget. We're going into this budget with bits and pieces, with good things. That's the only way to be good at this budget. There's no way we can forecast the budget. We have to be hurricane this year ourselves, nor without some taxes. But we've had the best year with no, no problems and awful weather. So taxes will get a lot better. We just have to do this budget with the best estimates we can go with. So we... Yeah, I understand. There's, I mean, you look at the sale of the surplus access and there's some that's kind of done by the leasing company. I'm telling it number to be lower, I'm telling it number to be more. Again, it's the best estimate we're looking at. I just see, that's how we need to really look. There's no way it does. Because the numbers can change and I'm not sure. I've seen it for a few years, I can say this before, that I think we just do our best with the numbers. Zach, I know you're, you're, because you played the full of all this, the numbers, up on board. I'll turn it into the best.
Yeah, I think every year, that's all we can do is, I mean, we can take our best educated guess and hope that everything, like you say, you don't know if you get hurricanes that year that can impact it. I mean, it just, there's a lot of factors that are unknown. But, you know, our job is to look at, you know, history and see what we've done and then also make a best guess for a lot of these items, you know? Stuff like the ad-alarm revenue, that's a lot more, that's a lot easier to predict because, you know, we know what the valuation of property is. So long as there's not like a revow or something like that, that generally tends to stay pretty, you know, predictable. But when you have something as, you know, variable as the revenue from local option sales tax because other towns, I mean, there's no, it's impossible to predict what other towns are gonna do until they do it in terms of their changes in their tax rate. So we just have to account for that. Like you said, the enterprise, they try to sell it at the best and highest price they can. That's their best guess. But, you know, hopefully they're able to get that with the vehicle shortage that's out there right now. Maybe they're able to get more than that, you know? That would be great. But, you know, I think that's, those are the numbers. They look at what their comparable sales are for vehicles of that mileage, route, you know, this region. And they base that, that estimate on that. So I think, you know, our estimate is just how we do it every year. It's the same process we do every year. So, you know, we're following our...
What's color issue? You got the number of it?
What's that?
Color?
One point five percent.
So, I agree with what's been said on, you do the best you can, best as far as the best, yes, what you think. As far as this local option sales tax, I don't have a problem with what you've got it. Because obviously, there's too many variables. We still don't know what the towns wanna do. I would rather receive planning low number. And then we find out at the end of the year that maybe we've got four hundred and fifty thousand coming in. Rather than us bumping that number up now and finding out mid-June that if you were to raise the taxes, it's gonna change. Now all of a sudden, we're seven-five or hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna figure out where we're gonna cut. I, I don't have a problem with it like this.
You got a comment, Jim?
Yeah, I'm cool. I've got one final comment on revenue.
Sure, go ahead.
This goes back to what Mr. King said, that I understand a budget is an estimate that failed. But this budget here does absolutely nothing to address the needs of our infrastructure for an entire year. Just keep that in mind. With all the speculation we're doing over revenue, including everything that I mentioned, it does absolutely nothing to the rest of meetings in this time. That's all I have.
That's, I'm glad about that, Steve. I'm glad about that. Because that, the infrastructure of our town is definitely increasing. I mean, that's, that's why it's for color, one point five percent. So we're increasing color for everything. Well, we don't have to do this. That's what the expectations are. Are we not looking at, looking at the taxes? Is that what we're doing now? Is that something we don't have to look at now or down the road? Or we're gonna kick that kid down the road?
No CRP for anything in this budget?
I mean, we don't have to do, that's what I'm saying. We don't have to do something that, that help, I mean, the services of town, I don't want it to decrease, I want it to increase. Red, red, lock it up, this and that, the town, the parks. The now parts, we're looking at down here. Even our buildings. The, the employees taking care of them. Our streets, a small mortgage. I mean, I'll be looking at doing something with our taxes this year like everybody else. Or we're gonna kick it down the road. That's gonna miss out on that if I go to the conversation part.
In my mind, Jeff, the solution person, let's be practical on this sales tax. We don't know what towns are gonna raise their taxes, that's up to them. I still say we're on that. And I say at least, when I made the motion, when I want to revisit the lease for PD, my intention was taking care of that in the days, but not next year. But I told Zach that, when I made that motion. When we meet on it this month, next month, go ahead and do that deal and take that question completely out of this upcoming budget. That simplifies the process quite a bit. Now, we bought that piece of land for a hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna sit and tell the people, we can't even put a fence on it, we can't do this, we can't do that. I mean, I'm with, there's nothing in this budget that addresses infrastructure. CRP. Even your grant, Zach, it could be done in this much, grant match. Why is it included in next year? That's what, that's what's throwing the whole thing off for me.
Just, just for clarification, the grant does have to be in the next fiscal year. That's how the grant agreement's written. But one other thing.
That's proof of one information.
Yeah, that's why it's included in the budget. But the, one thing I'll point out is with the American Rescue Plan, those funds, I mean, that we're talking nine hundred thousand dollars for both of those disbursements. And we're still waiting on guidance from that. They're supposed to come out with that in May, I believe. So, so we should have a better idea of that. If that can all be used for infrastructure, we don't know that for sure yet. But if that could all be used for infrastructure, we have a pretty good amount of money coming in from the federal government that can be used for that purpose. So that's one thing to kind of keep in mind. And I thought, I thought about that as we went through the budget, you know, when we kept the same amount that we're getting for Powellville. We might be getting a substantial amount from the federal government through those two disbursements. So that's something just to keep in mind as we're talking through infrastructure and what we're planning to do, so.
Yeah. One comment I would make is the... We haven't finished the spring paving and we haven't finished, the damage has done out in Bay Shore. And they have to be made with that. We have three hundred and sixty-some thousand in reserves. We can at any point in time determine this year or once you pass July, that's a minute from capital reserves. You know, another phase of that structure. I don't know that we have the information, everything that's left undone to do that right at this moment. But the money in there to do those things is your dog.
Yeah, I will. Steve mentioned with the leasing program.
Yeah, well, Steve mentioned with the leasing program, that was my understanding too. I thought that if we move forward with it now, in this budget year, rather than pushing it to the next budget year. That, that would help us going forward, I think we should do that.
Yeah, the only, what we've run into, and that's something I need to talk about, that gets more clarity. But, because all these other municipalities are doing, Algonzo County's doing it. Where right now, it's, it's a couple of months before we can actually get vehicles in because the vehicle shortage. So anything gives me pause is just, you know, we paid for it in this fiscal year. And then those don't come in, in some cases, maybe even until the fall, that's when those arrive. I just, I want to double check that and make sure we're fine. Other municipalities are doing it. I'm guessing that the way that you go about it is having that, uh, non-appropriations clause in the contract. And that language that addresses that, you know, it's subject to annual budget approval by the Board of Commissioners. So basically saying you're not obligating funds for a future year. That might remedy that, but I need to check with some other municipalities and, and see how they're approaching that exactly. But that was, ideally, if we can have it on the agenda in May, um, and, and get this stuff. If we can pay for it in this year, that's great. We can do a budget amendment, pay for all that, get it lined up. Just get it under contract with that non-appropriations language in there. And I think we'd be in good shape. I'm all for doing that if we can legally do that, so.
Okay, my experience is you weren't a part of that for a few years. There's several months I wrote.
Last one of the year.
And that's, and that's, that's more, that's nothing really different from the end of the years. I mean.
What about the lease, I mean, is that all true to the lease?
At least I can answer that too, but I do know they, they can get part of it and get it as well, so. But we can get a vehicle, get it quick, and let stuff do something. And where they fall in line with the rest of the departments.
My way of going to the board commissioner, like. Funds up. And give the attorney and the town manager authority, they have a contract, it's done. Whenever that is, I mean.
I'm not dedicated, I'm, I'm everybody else.
Yeah, but like Zach was saying, that's, that's the problem with this power, you're, you're held by laws. As far as making sure that you're not forwarding funds from this fiscal year. It's, it's really stupid the way it works, because I had to deal with that a lot, you know? So y'all order something, if it's not here by June thirty-third. You know, all things have to go back, like he says, it goes back to the general fund. You start over, you reissue another purchase order July first to continue on. Even with a multi-year contract, you have to end at the end of June, you start off. It can be the same contract, the monies have to be out of that fiscal year. You have to dump it back and then start over July. Even though it's still a contract that you approved this year, you can't mix the monies as far as the state's concerned. I hope that makes sense. And that's one of the frustrating things of, you know, being a city to deal with. I understand the logic behind it because of the way things were done by previous cities. And like you're talking about kicking a can, responsibility down the road, that's just something we, we have to deal with legally. But if there is a stipulation, like he says, some other towns are getting around it. But I don't want to jump on that bandwagon if there's some ifiness about it. You know, that could come back upon us in the end with anything like that.
So we're waiting on some additional information from Enterprise, but I should have an answer on that by the next board meeting in May. So, if we can put it, if we can put it on the agenda.
That is great.
Yeah, if we can go ahead with it, we'll have the budget amendment on there, the contract, everything for the board to approve. And we'll do it in this fiscal year. I'm all, I mean, trust me, I, I don't like to have to put stuff back into the general fund, just have to pull it back out. And, because it just makes the budget look higher than it is. Now, I hate doing that. It's, I mean, nobody wants to do that, but sometimes illegally, we have to on some of these things. So, it's just, if we can, if we can work it out on a multi-year contract with the non-appropriations clause inserted in that contract. That's best case scenario, and we'll present that in May, if, if that's an option, so.
What about the summit, same person?
That's the, that's the same concept in the sense that, I mean, really, we, it needs to roll back into the general fund. And we need to reflect it coming in the next fiscal year. And I don't think that, like, I don't know that that contract has a non-appropriations clause in it.
I know.
But I would just worry about repaying for services that haven't been delivered to, um, you know, in, because they're supposed to wrap up in December. We pay them now in, in May. And, I mean, it's just, you know, the recourse we have would be to take them to court and then to technically.
Technically, you're not supposed to do that with a contract like that. Let's say you're supposed to redo in July because you're paying, they're doing a service in that fiscal year. It needs to be paid from that fiscal year. That's, that's where you start getting into the, the sticky stuff with the state.
It has a huge impact. We're going to get the, the garden, infrastructure, place that in the, of, of, so. So do you need clarification, especially on that lease side? Mayor, there's one issue we did not discuss that was SRO contribution. Anybody interested in discussing that?
Well, that's what we're here for, so.
Sandy, uh, I think last time we talked, we told the town or something, the county did not pay.
And this is.
Who, who did you say did not pay?
They're the ones who didn't pay.
Just a lot of wildness.
Now, we got the state funds, the thirty-three thousand we got.
This, but this one here is for the current school calendar that I'm providing.
That's right now.
So there are a year, a year and then a month. So what you say grant money, that's the stuff I forgot.
Yeah, we got thirty-three thousand, which is the state, county just don't pay for any other small towns in several areas.
Is there usually a schedule when they do pay, or is it just when they feel like it?
We got the money, thirty-three thousand. We got the thirty-three thousand. January, the end of January, so then ask for that, everyone else. The letters probably went out in February. And I've got everyone out paying the first of April. So, let me actually look at the days, because we've been pretty busy and I don't want to say I've been out there like. It's a while getting this done out.
You have a lot of this taken, right? You're, uh, you, you had a lot of this taken, right?
She usually sends me something saying her money's in, send me an invoice, and this year she did not. So, um, I sent her an email asking about it, and she said, oh, yes, we had it. It was the whole thing, so everybody was, they were there. And she said, yes, we had it, send me an invoice, and I'll send it to you. So, that's what I did.
I don't know how to deal with this, but I mean, I'll start a conversation. I, I think we, we, we bore this, the, the expense far too long. I think it's time to act our neighbor. And, you know. We furnished, sometimes I get about there, there's three police officers out there, two sitting, one driving traffic. That's, that's money, that's labor, two times a day, five days a week. Whatever, nine months out of the year. It's more to what we furnish than just SRO.
Michelle, to answer your questions, I'm going to write some letters out, but in February, they're controlled.
So, I don't know, I don't know, I, I know that the commissioners never told me four years ago. Mayor, if you're going to need more money, I'll get it asked. I think at times, lost time asked. So I was a penalty or not, they're paying their portion. They stand to be the biggest grove in West Carter County, but yet they refuse to pay their share. Well, any effort can force them to allocate corporate to this own sale. Like Mark Dip or no, but not that. My comment, my comment from the beginning is if you run an SRO, county, and that all goes away. All the problems we talk about every year, collecting this money, finding it, just, it goes away. All the other, it's a county school, it's not a city school. That's, and as long as we do it, there's nobody else to blame. I make a comment too, one of the commissioners over there, uh, what we call them. People, they, they said that they would entertain the idea of doing. Every five years, we come back to one area. I don't know, that being a county campus and this being the city limits of K-40, I don't have that one, jurisdiction. I know we do which lane it is allowed, so I don't know that. Leave that to the former police chief on the board here, but.
Are we lumping in what we, what I call the traffic control with the SSO officer? That's my thing, is like you're talking about, I see these, our police down there directing traffic for a county school. But when I go down the other way, I see the other, it was a middle school there as well. You know, the county's there doing the traffic for that. So shouldn't they be involved with the traffic aspect of it?
Well, we're, we're in a, this, the school is in a municipal, it was our municipal. So that school falls within our jurisdiction, um, as far as responding to calls, whatnot. Now, there's a bakery event, everybody can usually. But, uh, while there's a county, they have to be rock and roll with the county and the county jurisdiction. That is not in this path. So, but they also get a traffic, yeah, that assist, that careful assistance from the county can be the help, the assistance of direction. That's what puts the chief in shape. And that, which he's, uh, made that one call, the help of that. Doesn't really work.
As far as the SRO setup, county only provides SROs in the schools that are not in a municipal. Morehead City provides an SRO and West Carter High School, the middle and elementary school. Newport provides an SRO, the, I don't know if it's a little, three or middle school over there. But the county sheriff's department does it for Broad Creek, uh, Crowatan, uh, I think East Carteret.
And Smart. Smart happened. We, before they started bringing SROs into the elementary schools and some of the middle schools. Kate Carter went and instituted the SRO program. If we had waited a couple of years, it would have probably been done by the county. We did, and it's long since. I hope that they would have. Well, maybe, maybe not, but the county, the county stepped up this program, I guess, towards those Newtown, Connecticut shootings and stuff. We were ahead of the game when we put the SRO totally at our expense to start with. Having these discussions every year.
Well, Zach, if you recall, you and I and the former mayor visited the sheriff. We were having a debacle over here, at least for a minute, and, and we did ask him if he would furnish a full-time SRO. If we gave him all this, you know, he could build them and, and whatnot, he agreed. And I think promising to get those for sixty-five thousand dollars, you remember that?
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark.
That's a lot cheaper to me. I think that, that might be an option. You know, he can get the same state grants, he can get his county money, he can get, we, I would personally gladly. Give the county our share and just get our money. But, I, I mean, it's a duty we don't want to give up. And at the same time, we, we're bearing the biggest expense here, that's just the bottom line. But maybe that's an option, I don't know. And maybe mayor, maybe you could go to the penalty and talk to all of those people and say, look, you know, it's the right thing to do. Protect your children, you're not paying your car.
So has there been an issue with them paying in the past, or?
They've never paid.
They've never paid.
They say it's not lawful, their commissioner told me it's just a law for them to pay. Just telling you what they told me right now, I heard, this is special business.
And I sent them a different letter.
It's a whopping six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
It's a law, it's a law, it's a law, it's a make. They would be, no, they would be, so it's lawsuits or something happen. But I, I didn't get into it, it's just my set. Once again, there's a lot of issues here, but the bottom line is, our citizens are bearing it well. And I agree with you on traffic. I mean, I think the chief would have, in a county of.
I'm going to lay this out for people, one too, as well. And, uh, sheriff department is very short-handed with officers. It's like, you know, what I want, everybody is short-handed with officers. So even trying to use my assistance down here from the even part at this point in time, especially coming up in the spring.
It's supposed to be our duty to, but.
No doubt, but if they don't have it, if somebody provide, I can black it out.
Well, you know, I don't think, we, I don't think our police force ever said, no, neutralize.
Neither did I, neither got that. Neither got that. It's just, it's just a matter of, you know, to provide the access that they have, like for us as well.
I, I think, here's what. If we're going to continue to do this, I, I think, I think someone should probably be our mayor, visit the penalty. Say, look, this is not the right, you, you, you're not paying your fair share of your children.
Well, they're getting ready to explode, and like I say.
Well, we're in the county. It, it won't, you know, but we can't let.
Yeah, that's the thing, we don't really.
I think we need, I think we need to shore it up, I guess, in the interim until something else can be negotiated.
Sandy, who did, you said, who has paid for this year other than us and the grant money?
Just to make, just to make it clear. It'd be a little confusing. Please, what happened? What they do is they take this seventy-four thousand, this was done, pressure, you did this, Zach, you know who did this? Before we got here. They take this seventy-one thousand, which is supposedly what it costs to pay this person. They take thirty percent right off the top that we as a town are eating, which I'm not sure I totally agree with that. They're saying this because thirty percent of the time, he's with us in the summer. So, they take thirty percent off the top and they divide the rest of that by the tails. I, I don't know that that's even fair, because even in the summers, when, you know, with all the, like Mr. Martin says. Even in the summers, truly, he's not at school, but when he is at school, we're taking on all that liability. I wonder sometimes if it, and another option would be instead of taking that thirty percent off the top, it's just the fact that it's straight. But maybe, like, say you can't control other people who are going to pay you, but instead of taking that thirty percent off the top. Or maybe we should do it a hundred percent down the.
Jeff, what about options that we can allow, don't they? Is that, you, you, you're all too free to that.
Well, I mean, when I'm here, that's, it's the target area. And, uh, then what else in the school could be that they're off for four quarters? Well, that was, but that was an excessive ticket card at that time. It was a town, you know, and they had like four officers here at that time. So, we were more than that to help out. We have, but then when I was being willing to step up and do something that may, I can't really imagine. That are willing to help in town.
No, but even if they can't supply an officer, I probably would do that.
Well, I'm just thinking, is, is this something that that nature of the school? I mean, I think the whole, that's it.
We needed SRO. So, no doubt, we've got to have an SRO. But, uh, there's more, mayor, there's several ways to, to do this. We can petition the, we can rate the rates. We can petition the sheriff's department to furnish SRO. We can do it on a rotational basis with them, while we can just keep the life of this and, and suffer the financial burden of it.
I don't know that raising the rates is going to do any good when they're not paying it. When this is, I mean, if, you know, what, by raising it, it's going to be that much more that they're, they're not paying it. At least the ones that are not paying it.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
They've always paid it, so.
Okay.
Everybody.
Everybody is always, they couldn't be happy this year.
Yes. Except they're in the summer.
Except this year. Everybody's not paid this year.
But we'll see.
Yeah, and they don't visit, like, when they need neutral aid, our officers are over there in Singapore. They're way up in the woods up in Bellic, got to be one of our citizens, that's all on their way up there. That's another issue.
I would definitely explore some options, especially with the county's concern. When you don't have a, uh, any teeth in a contract, so to speak, with the town, they just tell you they're not going to pay it.
Yeah, and one thing I'm not, it isn't very overpaid a lot, because their will, their willingness to do it. So that's the thing, that's the, count, but if the county solves all this. I, I mean, it's happening, but, uh, starting the board.
You're talking about, you're saying this law, but.
No, no, I'm not saying it's all, but I said just turn the responsibility over to county. They, in the previous meeting, they said that there's a willingness to do that. Why don't we leave it at this? Why don't we re-explore that option, not pay it today, as opposed to two, three years ago? Uh, and, and then bring it back.
Okay. I would, I would ask. To, to, to come up with some kind of negotiations with county lady or something like that. So at least traffic, I mean, that, that frees up one, maybe two police officers right there two times a day. I don't have the right, it's very difficult to name, but I would ask you to speak with, uh, pelleteer out there. I mean, I just find it hard to believe that kids provide their children. I just find, I don't think that their citizens know this issue, that their town is not paying their fair share. That's what I think.
Well, it's a whopping six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That pays for a lot of gas.
To me, to me, it's, it's, it's more of a gesture, yeah, that you, that you want to sort of, you know, care about your.
Our citizens really take advantage of that. They should be paying six hundred dollars.
I'll, I'll give their mayor a holler and see what he's got to say. Then we can have a future conversation over with the county and see if we can come up with something going forward.
Yeah, you don't want to make it worse, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
No.
My, my grandpa, they're always there. He don't want to ask you, you know.
There's definitely been an issue, Mark, and you know. I just still find it, you just personally, that, that we have to have a police officer in a school. That just still blows my mind.
I, I, I don't want to be able to say it's been here.
I know.
I'm gonna go with, but I, I think we have to look at, just revisit kind of the county and all these discussions.
All that we're willing to do, it's not going to be long change. That's like, so it's a little budget.
Yeah, there again, that's what we're here to do, is discuss these things.
We're outside of both areas of that. The police department give you a daily activity report from the school or weekly activity report of instances or what they had every week?
Um, so, so Jeremy does keep a log of everything he does. He has a pretty detailed log of all his activities. I don't request that from them, but I, I can provide that. I can get them a little bit if we need it. A lot of times, this is dealing with juveniles and everything. I, you know, I don't want to get too far into that. So if it's, if it's redacted stuff, you know, that we can provide, you know, if it's like a report that's just talking about, you know, how many times did he check out exterior doors or conduct like an intruder, you know, thrill or something to that effect, I think we can get that information together.
I'll, I'll let you see next time.
Okay.
One thing I could say too, Zach, is if our console got to do something stupid, our town's going to be sued for it. None of the other towns will be sued either way. Not to be a different actions, but it's a liability, you know, you need to have it back here, man.
So just, just to go back to this pelleteer issue, uh, when all this started, was there any type of signed agreement between the towns on this or was all?
I'll tell you how we did it. Um, I just said, saying, uh, all this hours, this SRO. When that came into effect, we were paying, first year we paid the entire cost of it. And then Ellen was commissioner since that time. She went out and solicited each of the towns for a donation. You know, like a certain amount of money. And then eventually we integrated it into the budget to come up with this kind of arrangement. This is altered four years old, five years old. So that's how, that's how.
But it's a verbal agreement, pretty much is what you're saying.
She, she literally would, would go over there and.
Well, kudos to Emily Oll for, you know, doing what they do and being Johnny on the spot.
Frank Rush there for years.
Frank was great.
Pardon?
I liked Frank.
But he, he was, you could really work something for that game. He just would get right to it.
Let's not forget that, I'm talking about Emily Oll and her being a neighbor, Zach and I, when we were there, broke that, like, like a deal two years ago, and I think Zach told me the other day, saving our town up to a hundred thousand dollars.
They've been awesome neighbors.
And that's over with after next week, so. We'll, we'll be, we'll come up to a hundred thousand dollars, but they have been, they have been good neighbors. I wish I were at them, sorry.
And hopefully we can repay that kindness if we can. Any other questions, comments on the revenue issue? Well, that's why I'm asking. If there's not, then we'll move on. We'll, we'll start.
I'll finish.
Anybody else? Mike?
I don't have any ideas except the one that we added, you can get this. The, uh, the business on solid waste.
Oh, okay.
I, if you want to kind of separate it, that's.
Well, no, I mean, we can talk about it now if you want to. But like you said, there's, there's a lot of implications that come along with doing it, and I'd love to see it broke out. But here again, that affects, we're talking about the sales tax issue. That would, that would really hurt us.
I felt like she came to the meeting and asked a question with this board.
Yes.
I feel somewhat of an obligation to go back with an answer. When you look at it, uh, we've got, uh, solid base in landfills, about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. But if we were to make it like a line item, which there is any individualities, like you have water, sewer, yardage, we pick up garbage, pick up a second line item. We put that in and we just reduce our taxes by four point seven cents. Okay, if we do that, what we're going to do, get killed with this, and the sales tax is just rushing big time. So it would cost us money. If you go back to the beginning, I asked questions when I came here in ninety-seven, why it wasn't a line item? And it was just the informality of the boards at that time. And I said, well, you know, we can clean up this town a little bit, but. Take your art out of the jungle, and that's exactly the way it's been. We also did the same thing with the yard debris pickup. Same category of thing. We paid like seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars the last year. So if you add that into that, make that a line item, you talk about five cents, we could lose more on the sales tax redistribution by raising, by lowering our taxes. When to keep up with the Joneses, we got to raise our taxes.
Right.
So I, I don't want any motion to change anything other than what we're doing. Or comment on this so that I can get back.
Right. And then that's my comment is that it would, it would kill us as far as getting back to sales tax. I'd love to see it broke out because then, because our future is here again going forward. You know, you're talking about infrastructure and we're getting ready to hopefully have this survey done to sort of tell us what all we need to do. Uh, so we can go into it with some, some eyes wide open and focus on some things. That's going to cost money naturally. So then we'll have an idea of what it's going to cost. And I'd love to see it broke out just for the fact that then we could say, okay, well, we need a stormwater debt or a stormwater fee to sort of set that aside. So people know that this amount of money is going toward that infrastructure. But to do that, with, with Eric, again, we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot with all this taxing, unless we can get something done in this next year, which I hope we can, but on the state level now, my God, I've, I've been inundated the past two weeks just trying to keep up with all the different bills that are being put in the state. And some of these are going to affect us as well. I mean, they're, they're doing one now. It's, it's ridiculous about the trees. They want to take away our ability even to, to do our tree management. You know, that's going to be handled by the state now. The state's going to become our mother and take care of us and coddle us. Because obviously we can't handle our own affairs and their views. And so, you know, I've been watching all this stuff and it's going to be amazing to see what happens. And that's going to affect us as well, but we got to watch after our own interest in, in trying to do the right thing, which I think would be to break it out. It's a separate bill. It would, it would hurt us too badly to do it right now. I think we don't need to say we're not going to do it in the future, but hopefully we can get the sales tax issue resolved where at least they could put a cap on it and say, okay, well. And without, you know, we're going to say you, you're capped out of this, or if you do raise your taxes, it won't affect what's going to happen with the sales tax issue. But can't do that right now. So there's a lot, a lot of things that have to be addressed, you know, that will affect us. So that's, that's my opinion.
I'm not, if I don't, I agree. Department, I can either toss the package and give the answers, the response, you know, if we did discuss it or do it in email and copy all of it.
Well, that's fine if you want to do that. Let her know that, you know, we did discuss it as a board. Absolutely.
Do that or do it in public. She asked it in public, maybe.
Yeah. I don't mind, I don't mind. If she was here now, it was, it's sort of public. The courtesy to give her a, a, a personal answer. I agree. And I'll be more glad, I'll formulate it. Let's start from the beginning, Zach.
I'd asked, uh, since we're having the SRO discussion, I asked chief to come in, but we kind of moved off from the SRO discussion now. And I don't know if the board wanted, if you have any questions for chief about the SRO or just want to kind of sum it up, what are discussions?
We just talked about, Chief, at length about, uh, traffic, oh, school. And, uh, Commissioner Warren might have commented that, uh, you could, uh, meet with the sheriff and request county to leave some of you guys, but sometimes there's three of you out there putting SRO up, most times two. Is that an option that you'd be willing to look into?
I'm sure he's comfortable with her. We get mutual aid, like we do because county is short and it's bad. There's, like the other night, there was a chase and all of that is we're tied up. Guys got mutual aid about three times. So they're not likely willing to do that if we're just traffic control. And, uh, the, I, I don't know if, if you're relating traffic control to just the SRO. But I'd like to insert here, our society is changing. It's not just about protection anymore. It's about the former years of these kids. And we just, one of our in-service requirement trainings this year is about SRO specifically. And the role that they play for these children in their lives. Because young people no longer respect law enforcement because society is changing. And it gives opportunity, five years worth for a new SRO member, and a new student to develop a relationship with them of law enforcement perspective where they're not scared of law enforcement or they do respect. I was driving through the parking lot of Los yesterday, windows down, two young guys, about around twenty, right, right, right. My boys is trying to get my attention. And I knew what they were doing. It was just showing disrespect. I was told by a twenty-year-old female, women's. She said, the people my age no longer respect you guys. And I think that it's important that we keep that working relationship with you. And, and show them while we are allowed and we are in our time, there's an affect inside to us. That's what people don't see that happens inside. And, and I, it's my SRO to get. Several incidents that we've had are pretty severe with these children that's happening in our, in our brains. And so it's a process of getting back together at this point.
So just like you're done, if there's another discussion, uh, uh, go away with that. Effect of what you just said, uh, society changed. We're just merely questioning. I think you guys are that. Once again, Kate Carteret is a very expensive because the county and the, and other towns are not willing to step up. County can do what they're supposed to do. We pay taxes. They don't have a, a share of our beckoning call at that, at any time.
Well, when we do delay, they do come to us also. So, uh, the agreement, we honor them and they trust.
It's simply because we have PD. That, 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 that they manage, they, they furnish traffic at other school, schools, Crowatan and Broad Creek.
Traffic control.
County. But they, they should, they should, that's a campus, that, that, they should be willing to kind of adapt and become and, and help you guys do traffic control twice a day. And you, but you're not willing to ask them.
I'm, I'm always protracted.
Well, in the meantime, I'm more solicit, uh, some character. I mean, this is, this is not appropriate that we pay down taxes. What do we get? I mean, county tax, I mean, I'll, and you can give it to someone that's.
Well, my guys do get back, especially a lot of nights, there's some situations. And that's another thing I've gathered in all of some situations that my guys have been in where definitely if there would have been a second SRO, I'm saying there would possibly not have been an entry of, uh, where there were our needs for a second, or sometimes three officers.
Let me ask you this, as I get into, I think we'll bring it up. What if you have an officer? You got one officer on duty at four o'clock in the morning. He's calling way out in the woods up in Pelletier and he's got some drunk hand from the side ditch. Some lady in our town calls, uh, needing assistance immediately. And they called you from Hooch Lake, so that tells me they don't have anybody. So warrior, what happens? How do you prioritize that?
That's the story. We could get back to that. She's in IRB, emergency situation. That's become second.
I get a lot of questions about that.
Right.
Lot of questions about this.
It will just want to be based on priority. That's the priority call. That is going to be priority. Now, we've had some issues where they weren't guarded and some responded later. Uh, not much later, but it was prioritized accordingly. So that, since it's not happening often.
Let me help you with this.
Yes. Yes, sir.
With this tap and we picked up a full pack, say we're going to call the county. You get a call within the town jurisdiction, or it, and what I have to call up, you can sit there. So it works. It's, it's a continuous help with all the agencies. So if they're asking, yes, you call, we've been called up here, who's waiting, what, not correct? You are here, you're already called itself, then we can house it. But it, it is all help fingers.
What about, uh, I recall, up in Europe, Chief, you had the mutual aid, the Jones County Sheriff. That's still in fact.
If they call for us, yes, then.
We have mutual aids with Craven Canyon, Alba Canyon, Donovan Canyon, and all the agencies in Parkhead. They saw this blanketed mutual aid agreement, all that agency through this. Because it's some big incident took place that had a huge explosion where there were, all the people were fed. We're followed with way in, it was even sure from the people in the town, this sort of thing here, just blanketed mutual aid agreement.
Well, the county, we get mutual aid call, say for example, they don't have PD, they're not interested in PD because it costs money. But we have sent our officers over there because the county actually failed. So.
I, I don't see whether the problem with that because if we go in, it could be a matter of life and death situation. I'm taking something right now, I was achieving, when you were to, they're not from what agency you're from, calling for help. I'm sending laws home to worry.
If, if we have an officer that's in IRB and he calls a certain code, the Morgan Show. If we have an officer that's in IRB, he calls certain code, the Morgan show up, Newport show up, Allen call show up. Every agency will tell.
A lot of people just have.
I'm going to text.
I haven't heard of any of those people saying it.
No.
Okay.
Personally, if I thought it was an issue, I would be as honest as I can be. I have not seen it in such a long. If I thought it was an issue, I would speak.
Seems like our backs favor it. Remember, every animal may take a bite. Not just this, but just everything.
When my guys are out here doing 15 to 25 stops a day, they're doing their job. And they're not tied up with other jurisdictions on top of weather costs they get, if y'all aware of what we're sending. And I mean, the last several days, the guys have been averaging nine to 10 stops in one shift. So they're out here active, invisible, on top of their business checks and their residential drive-throughs. They're doing their job.
I don't see a safety for the cars, the gas, the queue. Don't get any of that. And, you know. I'm not going to feel this way, and I think, Zach, I know this, but Zach and I had this conversation probably two, three years ago. That'll be somewhere that we get free abortions, all that stuff. But you didn't want to hit it? I'm not going to talk about it anymore.
It's just basically the law that we follow, that we have an agreement between. This is if we respond. If we.
Do you have the right to say that?
Yes. Here's what we would do. If we're on a priority call, an officer will do just like he said. Mutual aid and allow, even mutual aid's ones were all the same. Just, you know, they'll give some aid to that person if they're on a priority call. There's been times where it's been already called, my officers were already here, were out to jail, the process, arrested. And they have to call for mutual aid for those calls. Those guys show up. If they can't, then they mutual aid. It's just a reciprocal, reciprocating process. But it doesn't count as a free.
And then you get, you read the Facebook, time of expiration, some time of practice, backs up. Trying to get a lot of the fear, they pulled favored our PD for not going out there. So. We all have set eight feet wrong, but I mean, that's just me.
Stay high with control without saying, two years ago, in regards to that intersection. That's, we refer them to stay high with control with the call, the flag, it's their jurisdiction. And they won't even put their control put out there because of possible intersection. Or even to work that is their jurisdiction. And we're not, county or red's not going to put an officer out there that's going to stay all day long, just watching the park. Now, if there's a major wreck out there, you have county or red, it's fine. So it'd be how we come behind the red. Their transit may not go this, well, it's not ours, you know, we go away, but you know, it depends on the situation.
I just feel, bottom line is this, I just feel like, since we're, our citizens are gracious enough to fund a police department. Okay? And we enjoy our police department. You know, we're thankful to have it. Like I'm a little bit stench, you know what I mean? I mean, I don't see anybody else having skin in the game. And as long as we're, it goes back to SRO, as long as we're doing this, they're not going to do anything. I'm using our police department. Many mutual aid calls you run, I'm not a super.
I don't have, it's not many. It's not. I'm saying about average, one a week if that. There might be some weeks, there's none. Next week, there might be two. I would say average one, possibly one a week.
Seeing how Chief's here, you want to jump to his department?
Yeah, yeah, we can jump.
Go ahead, knock it out, seeing how Chief's on the roll.
So is our main directive, we're going to ask, the chief's going to ask the sheriff about track control in school zone. That's the main primary directive in regards to the SRO.
Yes, yes. For the track control.
What specifically would you like to see happen at the school zone because?
A lot of. You got an SRO, he's primary track.
That's correct.
And I know why you're there, because I think more officers got the. But I want to understand why you got, sometimes, and you know, there's others like you and, oh, and that's our three officers. Why not just most two?
Oh, I can stop that. I mean, we can agree to that. That's.
If you got ready for that, Zach, for spirits, and they need to stop.
It's kind of like this period. People ask me every now and then, why don't you write citations for these people running red light and turning on an island? I said, okay, let's say we do that. While we write one citation, there's 50 other cars that get by, that block the intersection and run the red light. So how can we stop them? When one officer's doing traffic stop, somebody else thinks, oh, we're going to come through. He's got a car stopped already. And sometimes that does, you know, backup officer does help with the traffic.
Sorry, tomorrow, I'll just, I'll just say three officers out there.
Okay, well, that can stop. If that's, if that is.
No, my call, it's the town manager calls and so that's.
I just, I mean, I see the advantages to having more officers out there because if you're coming, you're coming down 24 from Morehead, you encounter an officer. If you're coming down Jacksonville, you encounter an officer, gets it in people's head because people ignore the flashing yellow lights. But they see the blue lights and they see the car sitting there and they slow down. I mean, I think it's, it's definitely an officer, it's an officer safety issue. Is, I mean, 24, you got 28,000 vehicles per day, you know, I was 24. And I mean, and you got an officer standing out there unprotected, directing traffic. I mean, it's definitely an officer safety issue. So I would, I defer to the chief on his judgment on how many people or how many officers need to be out there. But they do make quite a few stops of people that come through there and they blow through the school zone. And I think that's a good thing because it gets it in people's minds that, you know, it only takes them to get stopped once and then I must speed through the school zone again. I think that's a good thing.
I think it'd be great if the county could offer a car, if they would be nice enough gracious, that way you wouldn't have three people there. You know, tying up all our officers when the county could.
And I have a question for Chief, who do you get your ammo from now? Who do you buy your ammo from now?
We go through. Well, we still stuck with it. That's where I got the flow because they. Man, oh. Three lollins, yes, three lollins.
It is three lollins?
Yes. We did one jail, because they have the best rates on uniforms.
Right. Yeah, I realized ammunition is the one that, are you having a hard time getting?
We can, I placed the order in March and hopes that we'll be able to get it by the end of the year. It's not far out. I placed a minimal order and that's some of the, why I have to have one, it's that's two cases. Two, two, three, and a case of 45. Full metal jacket is now 1,300 and some dollars estimate.
That's for a thousand rounds? So it's a, it's a dollar thirty a round?
It's 500 rounds of 45 and 500 rounds.
Sounds like a dollar thirty a round.
Ammo a little over.
And there's no end in sight. So this year, we changed the way we qualify, what we use, all the textures to make our ammo stretch out further. Which we're always doing with 30 rounds, but we'll do a little bit different. Did it where we expanded the full battle jacket and got, and so we can turn it over and I don't pull that out, put it in the full battle jacket. So we started costing that.
How many rounds do you put in? How many are in?
I have a camp in there. We have a camp pool and we have a partial bounty. So we look good, we're really good. We have four.
Hope you never got used.
We have a set of.
There's a man.
I'll be near the basement.
Like I told you, don't ever go in my booth. Get so far.
When I was. Yeah. I would like to say we can increase the place, to Zach, increase a little bit of trade budget because now the classroom setting is open back up. I've got an officer in a two-week course down, July, another officer, two-week course of other officers going for additional radar training. So we have a lot more activity going on. I will also, because I'm. Okay, this is going to work. Vehicle two, which was replaced by a new vehicle, is in Golsboro with a low intake. So it's taken up there day before yesterday. So these are still issues to deal with. It has 97,000 miles on it. But Officer X bought, took a neck of care of that vehicle. So it just happens. And so it's going to be great to get into vehicles that we can cycle without having to go to such a high mileage on those vehicles. And if I started this one outside with the guys, you're all going to say, what? You never saw the scene. But that's just where we're at right now. My new vehicle, it's going to, he will transparent, I've been using it for two weeks now. I had 37,400 some miles, transmissions bad, so they're replacing it. Those are issues that we have to deal with and I, I'll be careful of taking a big care of it. So sometimes it just comes up. So I think it's important that we get into the leasing program and we're able to get the maximum payback to vehicles, trade in value. It's really going to be beneficial for the town. It's going to be beneficial for the department. So.
Well, it's obvious, it's a way, of course, actually, I didn't do the leasing in my mind, I didn't call the captain. Anywhere, the opposite. And there's not any in this budget. I had to jump it water. You can send to take about an hour to get a lease call and it's obvious the last one involved, almost.
So several months.
Does Enterprise have any more talent to get forward?
Enterprise takes more opportunity to get here because of the greater dilution, because they purchase so many. Yes. And they are in production again, so they're playing catch up right now.
Is this, is this not, not any advantage for uniforms?
Well, I'm going to tell you, I think that it would be, but I'm trying to think where we got, we got. A grant for our power carriers, for guys below, it's just so much more convenient. It's a 50%, and we're still waiting on reimbursement for that. Oh.
No, no.
I've consulted with, with the guys, unless uniforms gets significantly up, I think we'll be okay. There were based on replacement costs for some of their gear that's wearing out, magazine holders and all, but I think that we incorporate that into the budget. And then as far as office supplies, I think I expect to increase that a little. Because our chairs were worn out, literally. You might end up before you said it, so I'm looking. So we need to place like, you know, three chairs with a reasonably priced chair, 140 bucks. So I'm trying to incorporate that into the, as you all said. We always have the potential, we use record computers in our vehicles. And they have it's about 350. And you always have potential, one of those going out through the year. That you might have replacements, they get hot, they get cold, and get hot, and get cold. But it's still, to me, it's more innovative to do that. It's a, you gotta, you have a system that costs much more for you inside.
Chief, what's, two more questions. What's your plans for the month, if you want to put your car cams on place off the mountain, give you really, gain traction? I understand they're a thousand dollars a piece.
My push is a square for a vehicle to have an car cam. That's my push.
You mean I give you all that?
We have to. And we actually utilize them. There's probably been a couple of situations we wish we did now. Video, we've been requesting video that was not in there, not for significant things, but for some DOD lines and all that.
How much?
About 6,000. She installed for a year.
Where did you get the?
Back over there. We got them through. The point to where, that's how much we have now. We actually. We're actually possibly under way for another radar unit, so we have enough points to get that. So we do, we do participate with the government's armor security program and we get all the points we can there also.
We not used to have more than two. Car cams.
Yes, the old, the old ones you did. And, uh, thank. That's a long range capacity.
Well, I'm sure it's been here.
Yep.
Oh.
Yes.
Let me ask you my last question. You seen any better videos for having that K nine on the job yet?
Well, it's like this, it's just like, uh, state five percent and finish down the track and he says. K nine is just like a taser. It's just like, you know, it says you have it there when you need it. And we, we have, I think that we'll eventually just go pay off, but we do have. Uh, there was a situation this morning, but because the stop didn't occur until a certain area. He did not utilize a Draco on that stop because it was in a residential area. Uh, and, uh, he didn't have any backup, so. Uh, but yes, I I do believe there's potential there with that K nine. Uh, I still believe in it. I've seen him in action and, um, I've encouraged him to utilize them. We did, that's why we did multiple stops because the probabilities go up if we want to have that one. Uh, that he's, he's going to, uh, you know, be utilized to actually find a reward, you know, at the end of the search, so. I'd like to give it time because we really started training two of them.
Yeah.
And that's probably my fault because I did the.
Well, I wasn't educated.
Yeah. So it's technical. Yes.
He's training tracking, right?
Yes, and he can track. He's good at tracking.
Uh, you have, you have one kid lost back behind that school or drive from that dog, that dog's taking his lifetime right there.
When you think about tracking, I've tested it before and gone like a mile, a mile before away. And and he's come behind and found me, I mean, just like that. So yes, he's, he's there for a good track.
Any more comments on the police budget?
I want to have a question on the camera for the car. We looked into the body cameras instead of the.
We also are thinking that the figures are not in my head, but they're running. Trying to think, I don't want to say because I don't, because I really know that they're not, they're not expensive. They're quite expensive.
Are they expensive at the parking?
No, they're not.
So you probably get two or three eye cameras in comparison to a vehicle camera?
We possibly could. I need to service that again, uh, research it and see. Uh, the cameras that, uh, Officer Walden, we got, we've been several months, so that's why I don't have the regulation.
Is the point system headed towards the body camera system?
I don't. I don't think so. I think it only produces radars.
That's the mistake rate you're talking about?
That's correct. I think it doesn't give us radars. I don't know if it's good for in car cams. I have to look and see what all the, they are going to put a lot of equipment from the list. You know, you used to be able to get a vehicle through. Uh, so you know, you can see, I I let Walden handle that side of it. So that's why I don't really have. An answer to what else is included on the list, the probabilities will, uh, I'm taking through the program.
I would like to see the officer with body cameras because you have more of a one-on-one contact with the department. I do know if you had just a vehicle camera. That often it, it does go inside the. Certain range, but you lose visual. So. I think something maybe, maybe to look at as far as comparison, which would be beneficial for the option for the department, for the talents. For sale. And it also, in my experience, it also decrease your complaints on the officers. But also keep the officer in the charity check.
Chief, I'd like to, I'd like to encourage you to get an estimate on body cameras. Uh, being the Fox News watcher, they just happened to have a segment this morning. They already announced and all going to Fox News. They showed the cameras. It's not, now whether it's mounting or whatever, I don't know. I'm scared of it. That's. I would encourage you, Zach, to get an estimate. If we're able to do anything with this budget. Maybe, maybe, uh, talk about that.
Also, any information as far as what has to happen as far as the liability and the responsibility of cameras? Because you gotta, I'm sure archive those videos and how that. The track on the training aspect of it.
That's the actual policy. You know this because that, that computer system, they can be, they could have that, that charge.
Yeah, they'll probably give you the cameras.
To the, the archive.
Yep.
And you know how many days you have to keep that?
I don't remember.
I think it's based on two hundred and fifty minutes.
Yeah. But then after seventy days it falls off.
Yeah.
Unless you go in and be trapped in it.
I think that the day is time to come up. Today's environment, I think it's just as important as body cameras, you know, if they just put new gear, except for handgun. That's just me.
Sure, you know, some people talk to you, but Brian next to Morrie City, I never clear my ears from how much they cost.
Yes.
I know they have problems with the new system. They just went.
We're.
Yeah.
I think it probably could be twenty days it will be placed in force. So I mean, one lawsuit.
But it's just, it's another safety because if something happened to an officer inside a domestic, in a house in a domestic. If something happened. They don't leave it at all. They have a camera to go by and look. So there's a lot of, a lot of. But the cost of.
I think.
Whether the computer is, is asked on the stock camera itself.
Yeah, those are chief. The cam, the cameras, that's what, that's not what worries me in terms of the budget. Impact is going to be the backend infrastructure, the cloud, I mean, cloud storage, just their, their internet needs to be upgraded over there. Like the network needs to be configured correctly so it's secure, more secure than it is if we're going to have all that footage stored and. I mean, it, that's the big impact, the actual cameras, hardly not that much, but that's, uh. And that's something we'd have to kind of wrap our head around, just how much stuff needs to be changed because their internet is super slow over there. Like, I mean, they're just kind of getting by right now because they don't have that much stuff. We definitely need to upgrade their internet. I mean, we need to make sure.
It's a small.
Was it? It's, well, to do it like they needed to be done, that they have a VPN, all the VPN stuff we need to be updated. I mean, it's, there's a lot, but. I mean, they're kind of, you know, behind on that sense that we need them to, we'd have to really bring them in. Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be good to have a price, but I think we'll include also everything that has to happen on the backend of it. And that way we have some perspective about just how much we're talking in terms of costs. And we did apply for a grant. Um, I don't know if we've heard anything back about, but we did apply for a state grant for all of the dash cameras. Um, that was something that we put in in January, so.
Again, I don't remember the figures, but I've been told Officer Walden that the body cameras were purchased in the car cameras. That was through, uh, the change. That was through watch guard, which are really the most reliable ones.
Does Axon do them too?
Axon, he did both accidents.
That's who our taser.
Still got my taser from.
I wonder if everything that can be decided today is wrong or. The federal government's supposed to issue a bit.
So maybe someone could use, if, if we get a windfall, the body in that direction, maybe that's, that's an option that you could use that for.
Yeah, it'd be nice if, especially if it becomes a federal mandate. I hope that they attach some federal funding to it. And I mean, that was it.
Uh, so what his recollection is, is, uh. Body cameras, uh. Were going to be a hundred thousand dollars. Watch guard, grand, twenty-five thousand. Once you say each car. That's for the department. That should be for the department, uh, but what he said for each car.
Yeah.
I think, I think you just say in the, in the pursuit, it helps. For it to show the speed of the vehicle, what happens to vehicles if there's accidents. Or is the instance person involved, the parking, the neutral very.
They cover a wider area. And like you said, if they probably didn't catch that, they can actually attach a speaker to your belt. Go out of sight and have speakers picking up all the voices.
That's, but and then when you turn on the, uh, the blue lights, it's on, there's cameras on that come on. But they also, twenty seconds, don't remember.
I think so.
Twenty second, thirty second. Catch whatever happened.
That's true.
Uh, so there, I, I propose for car cameras, but. You have more to my experience than I just, my experience. The, you have more uses with the body cameras, you have more contact, more remote, of course.
Well, I just think it'd be interesting to hear what's cost, even if not for this budget.
Right.
Yeah, I would, I would say just if, just off of that estimate at thirty thousand dollars. And I would say, you know, we're probably looking at. Five to ten in what we need to do on backend network infrastructure over there, make sure that we're.
The policy said that as a, including the storage systems, or the body count footage, or redact faces, et cetera.
How many cameras does he say that's? How many cameras?
I think he, he had gotten quote from six.
One six cameras, about a hundred, a hundred six cameras. Or body camera?
Uh, he said, well, he might, it might have been seven, but yeah, they're expensive.
Fox News live this morning, they did an old segment, they showed about that long, kind of square. Showed the case and everything that came in.
But the camera itself probably costs it, but then it's everything else that goes into it is just, and it's just.
It's a lot of, we're not reliable. That's why we researched, got, put, reviewed some of the cameras. That's why these night brands are, are reliable.
Okay, Jim, you just like the fire. The farmer's never seen a red truck because of us.
Well, I'm still in that, Mr. Kane.
Yeah, I think it's, we can come back at the next meeting and just have a definitive cost estimate on how much does it cost to outfit each officer with body cam?
Yep.
We should also factor in, we should have one spare for when part timers are working so that they can wear one. We want to make sure we cover those situations. And then what the backend infrastructure upgrades are that we need to do from the network standpoint, but also for the cloud storage and figure out what that would be per year. Uh, but it'd be great if, uh, if the federal government comes up with some money and sends it all, I'd be all for that. Yeah, I think at the beginning of May is when the guidance was supposed to be coming out from the Department of Treasury and I think was supposed to be issuing some, so.
And I have got some quotes for external drives and checks also because we'll load up the system. From spec, because our.
Uh, so I think, I mean, the other thing too is just, eh, we probably at some point could also look at upgrading. It's like Chief said, I mean, they've got laptops that happen there are just your standard issue. And there's just a lot of things what we could be looking at over there, um, that have been deferred cost. And I commend Chief on keeping his budget under control and low, but at sometimes it's, you know, if we were ever to go to like a, a CAD system. You know, like a computer assisted dispatch where, you know, they can see where the car is, it can pop up and queue on the screen and all that. If we ever went to that, we'd probably have to go with the hard hooks route. Uh, but there's some things like that that have just been deferred, but I, you know, I like to mention that in the grant, you know, in the, in the whole discussion. Because there's some things that we haven't been able to do like that, just from a cost standpoint, that would be beneficial in the future. Uh, if they could have, also the radio upgrades is another, uh, kind of item that's out there, so.
Just if we put a little capital, like, you know, I mean, you got to.
The capital out like they put there anytime, anywhere. Like, don't put money in.
Well, this is a good example. We have the option to go to like in car eight hundred hertz radios. And there's a sell on right now, but our standard and long, they attempt to rent our vehicles currently, they're about one hundred fifty dollars. And I just checked this week with Gary, uh, ECI. And the sale right now, the, uh, the HF, I'm sorry, UHF radio is eight hundred frequency. Uh, there, uh, is about about eighteen hundred fifty dollars. So that gives you idea of the difference in price. That's where the sale.
Well, it doesn't really have a place for, I don't. Or any form of, so, but, but I feel like what Mr. Bill says. A couple of months ago, you came. He made a comment, you know, maybe. But you need to make sure you're. You've got nothing for stuff. You will have to come there a year for a budget.
I, I, I'm sure about a second. I'm sure we're quiet where we stand right now. I got a, a light we're getting on. It's waiting bullets right outside. Uh, it's just been one of those years and come later.
Hey, Chief, haven't you got some places you got to be? We've been on SRO with this thing.
Oh, I, I'm just. I got a truck around the San Tex, that's a bloody truck.
Hit that red truck. It's overloaded down here.
I thought it was black tire.
Yeah, you need to get it.
Anybody else have any more comments about the police budget? I just have one, uh, regarding to the training. And that's for yourself, sir. And I don't know if you had any money for yourself. I just think the way you just expressed that things are changing, rules are changing, laws are changing. Uh, I know the stool government had a, uh, it's called developmental supervision course. I think it'd be awesome, uh, for you to attend. So just want to make sure you got money for yourself to keep up to date and go to things like.
We could add that. I really managed that. I just did, uh, completed five, five week courses, uh, in leadership, which was awesome, free.
Free's good.
And so, yes, I, I continue all of our also. So, uh, I can't remember. I don't have a budget sheet.
Yeah, we've got. Two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars in there for training.
Well, I definitely can have opportunities to train us, of course, I'd like to.
It's, it's expensive, but yeah.
And, and I'm sure it's out in town somewhere.
Yeah, it was in Chapel Hill. And maybe there again, things have changed so much. They may offer it remotely now. I'm not sure. It might be, it's also, I'm not sure if it's just something, you know, you might all look into. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Yes.
We'll keep back out there.
I, what you do, buddy?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll go back to the first page. We'll go to governing board. Um, are there any questions? In the governing board on any of those lineups that we had discussed already?
Once again, the sun that my news play, is that something people look into? Is it we're able to pay that? We.
I, I'll double check, um, to make sure. I'm, I'm pretty confident that we have to, but if we find out that we don't, then we'll definitely pay this here.
Is Brad asking for a raise or something?
Yes. Yeah, he's asking to increase sales.
What is his rate? I mean, we hired him.
Uh, right now it's one twenty per hour for the first ten hours and he's.
How much have you used in so far?
Yeah. Uh, we, we absolutely use all ten hours just about every month. Uh, and then also with him having to attend additional meetings, uh, that continues to increase like if he needs to be.
Think about that. Think about that.
So he's he's going from, so the first ten hours was at one hundred twenty dollars. Increasing to a hundred fifty dollars per hour for the first ten hours, then it goes to the second rate, I have to pull the email to to tell you what that is, it's like two hundred something. So calculating on, you know, you know, per month, he's going to do fifteen hundred hours and then you calculate how many hours over based off of what we've done this year. Gives you a pretty good idea of what we're going to be looking at terms of cost. Um so that's where that's where we're coming up with that. Uh he's been, he's maintained that same rate since he started in two thousand and eighteen, I believe. Um. He's kept that hundred twenty dollars uh for the first ten hours, so it's a guaranteed twelve hundred per month. I think when he factored into that rate, he was thinking there could be some months where he didn't hit the ten hour mark, but he definitely hits the ten hour mark every month. So as he's as he's having to attend additional meetings like planning board, board of adjustment, like board of adjustment just had an organizational meeting this week that. You know, we had to have him out to give a presentation on cost and judicial procedure, but the more little added things, the more goes over that total. So we try to, we try to limit it as much as possible, but uh we tend to have a lot of questions that that he answers or researches. So um it's, you know, I don't forecast, I don't think we'll ever be less than ten hours um in a given month, so I think we're always hitting that.
Yeah, my question is. Before we had Curtis, he used to, like if I would call him, he would. Then she would. Keep a little tally of the minutes and then when he got about an hour, he bills an hour or. And he don't people call him, I was wrapped in this because mayor said, you know, we're these costs are. And I asked if I would go through you, that's the question that I. Which I'm firing Bill, but not me at all, but I just want to help him build.
Yeah, he gives us a a breakdown that has everything on there in terms of like, and it's all. The portion of the hour, so it could be like point two or, and so that all adds up, he figures, you know, so right off the top. Right now he's getting twelve hundred, right? That's guaranteed that he'll get that regardless if we use the ten hours or not. But beyond that, then he bills at that increased rate for those additional hours that that he. Um that either it's phone calls, emails, so all that's included in there, it's like itemized for what he charges for each month.
Plus the rest of the world using over this rate beyond seven hours. I'll make that point.
Yeah, I think, I mean, Brett does a really good job for us, I mean, I definitely, I think there's, you know, it's just, yeah. So I think all things considered, I mean, just looking at the last time that we had done an R and P for legal cost is. What he's asked to increase to is, is I think fairly reasonable, just looking at what we got before when we went through that process. Um it still hasn't hit the threshold of what some of the others were, so I think we're we're still in pretty good shape, but I do understand it's a, it is an increase. So hopefully this is, hopefully we'll go for another like three years before anything else is asked for, so.
Any more questions about the governing board? Now we're moving to the general administration. I just got a question about the the state retirement, is that still a, did they up the percentage as far as, it used to be six percent? As far as what we take out and they match the six percent, has that changed? The state?
We pay six percent. The state is matching.
Okay, well, that's good.
Right now it's nine percent.
Okay.
And that's what that increase in this uh this budget is, is that they've gone from that nine percent to eleven point four one percent. That's.
And the police is more.
Okay, I just want to make one comment. This is my fourth budget process. I tried my best by something talking about administration, but. Those four years of growth, I have enough to say.
It's right.
Straight forward, yeah. It's the only department that I I can recall that I. That right? Looks good, Zach.
Any comments, questions? Now we'll be going parks wreck.
I've got some comments.
Go right ahead.
Once again, every year. There's not enough money to put it in our park. The beautiful, keep them up, maintain them, expand them, whatever. Uh we just bought a beautiful piece of land. On water, got a good deal on it, there's nothing to do. Fixing. Parking lot. Picnic tables, grill. Just so you guys know, I like your time. So just to make sure, because bulkhead down there on side. Trying to save some money. It's not only that, it's it's just every year, I mean, you know, in the next year. We need a lot of gravel, that's the most fun of the money. We've got a beautiful piece of property with no money. That's in my mind, it's just uh. Sticks out every year. Every year, you see it move here. So I guess what I'm saying exactly for right to take this. Lease out of this budget. That's going to help in in matches like that out there to put some money in that, in that apartment. At least get a fence, and I think that fence minus, if you bought a fence, minus, this is rough as. Give me, yes, six thousand dollars, six to seven thousand. I think Zach will stop buying some gravel with the coves, money we gave it, which is a good deal, maybe that addresses the gravel issues. The bulkhead repair, Zach, didn't we allocate twenty thousand?
Yes, yeah, we did.
So.
Twenty three.
Buy some materials and and stuff, but it's still. Every year is the same thing, so I would like to ask the board if we come back, if we want to come back to budget again. If we're able to get that that money out of the lease, if y'all be willing to put some money in our parks. That's the number one complaint. Uh but everything in town. Is the condition of the parks, that's I hear all the time, and granted, this some of us repetitive from the same thing, but. Still, and we've all that branding part down there, just you know, painting and whatnot, everything like that. That's all that's. Uh and again, this is no issue. We funded the park, store it on that land, like dog, we gave a hundred ten thousand dollars one year, I think Zach, it never got used, but. You know, those people that come to us time and time again, I think Susan Paul been one of them, this little park over there, we don't have one. No money in the budget. No infrastructure, no, I mean, so I don't understand it. Same thing over here, struggle with budget. If we use the reserves to do things in this current budget. That's what we're free of this budget. Put a few dollars in there. That's just my opinion. That I want to go ahead and enlighten the board too. Spoke to Mr. Miller, which is involved with trail management, but. I have asked the county to help us beat over that section of trail from school. The annual, which involves more walk. And uh that will be on their budget. It's a budget item, so Commissioner Callers won't present to the. None of the board commissioners. So if you get a chance, then we'll reach out to you. That's part of that work. Very, 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 and I'll tell you, they meant to teach street credit. Not meant for him, you know, we, Zach, what we last time we met, twenty thousand dollars we wanted. And people had to, now it's down to eight thousand, because he picked up the phone immediately, got a ball rolling, they got Rudy. Gives that an education on the front, Grant, so he has had it in some way. Now, what he did with self-stick distribution, we all got a problem with that, but it still have to.
Well, in this business, you have to look at each issue. Yeah, you can't hold one issue over another, you gotta you gotta move on.
Sort of like a grown up dog, you don't know what to put your hand down.
Well, you know, the jurors still have. I think, you know, the county made a comment. There's other ways they can help, but I picked up on that and that. It's just like. So Commissioner Miller too. We asked him to give the federal government, so he can, in his staff, allow us to cut through Grotech and shorten the length of the track. So he's, they can do that, but anyway. Once again.
Or I just want to make one point on the D maps in the history of art. You know, the only place that really needs is that place right where the rent goes down to the water. If you can deal with the other part, including the T section, you benefit from.
I don't understand that, but during the conversation, Moffett Nichols, Commissioner Caller. Had to defer that rap, Moffett Nichols drives it out in the year, so really hadn't paid their part on the grant, but we couldn't just say, do you want this? So that was part of the the deal, so.
I mean, that's all I get is that one section will be fine.
I'll say one more thing. The base over here that uh the former ward, go down one foot of water. I asked him to help with that. Old story short, owner Kitty Year has applied for a permit and he's going to, if the permit's grand, he's going to dress that and think about his pockets. So that at least people can go down there and fish in some deep water. We, that's a lot. Uh he'll deal with that. He's already got, but he is already actually, he's paying for, he texted me yesterday, so he's already submitted the plans to average the hiring and taking for permit. In hopes it gets worth it, so. You know, don't hurt to ask.
Anybody else comments? All right, next up is planning inspections.
Any questions on there?
From Mayor, so Zach, I did, just so the board knows. Yeah, some requests from citizens to install a dog poop station that a couple of parts. Two hundred dollars a piece, so I told that.
My little bag, Spencer, thanks.
A lot of people stepped in dog poop. You know, this little two hundred dollar, two. Station that's got the back here. Well, about ten thousand, but. Pretty bad when you go very good, you go do one of the horrible step in. Politics.
That's something that just irritates the living. You know what, I mean, there's people out picking up there, you know what?
After their.
Yes. You know, that.
You give him a bag, just to.
I just passed it on, Zach.
Just for clarification on parks and recs, it is, does the board want me to approach that? If after some of this, after we get through the entire budget, if there's anything left that can go in there, then we put that towards that. Um because obviously there's still going to be, and that's what I want to emphasize, there's still going to be that leasing cost on those enterprise, and that is a fair amount of money that um we're talking about for that. So I mean, the upfront cost, we can take care of potentially this year, but there's still going to be that, I mean, the budget's still going up by that amount, which is a pretty good amount, you know, to cover those vehicles, so. And that would just be my question on parks and rec with some of those increases that Commissioner Mark referenced. Do you want me to just see where we're at at the, after we got the final numbers for enterprise incorporated this in and then just see if there's something left over, we'll put it in there? Are we trying to go about that a different way?
I would, I would prefer to see where we're at before we start moving money. I mean, I I think if there's money, if there's extra money, I would, I would too would like to see it go into the parks. But. But I don't want to throw it in now and then start trying to figure out where we're going to get, where somewhere else we're going to cut it from. I'd like to see where we're at and if there is.
Okay.
How's everybody else feel about that?
Uh I'm kind of like, I'm gonna see, see where it washes as far as the lease and then see how much money's in there and then appropriate.
Yeah, we got to have like one more follow up even before the June meeting.
Yes, I I was thinking of, maybe we could do like next week or something.
Yeah, give us that some time to get the numbers up, we can look at the schedule before we leave today, see what everybody's got.
Yeah.
Could you have a conceptual drawing of what you perceive for this new property?
Yeah, I can put together some some cost on it. So our lease obligations, like after we get into the next fiscal year, what we owe those leases for the vehicles, is that something? If we're, if we wait until the next fiscal year, the way I've got it in there is like we're we're pulling from our undesignated fund balance to cover those costs for the lease. Is that something, if we have to absorb that into the budget, then we probably have to do a tax increase to account for that, would be just kind of what I I want to mention that, I mean, because we're talking. I could do the math on it, but it's probably somewhere in the tune of like forty thousand dollars, somewhere around there, so about a penny to cover those leasing costs. Um you know, that's, I know we talked about if we, for the first year of the program, we could defer a tax increase because we pay for it out of, you know, designated fund balance, but at some point we're going to have to. Increase taxes to pay for that lease amount, you know, that obligation, so just something I want to make sure I put out there, because that is some, I'm just thinking in my mind as we're going through this, that we're going to have to kind of account for those costs. That's why, I mean, the budgets, eh just like every year, it's tight, you know, and it's always razor thin, I mean, and so that's kind of where. We really can't make too many changes without it pushing it to, we have to figure out a way, we have to figure out revenue source, you know? But even if we do that, so let's say we do, we enter the agreement with enterprise, we go ahead and we pay the outfit, like the outfit cost to, you know, outfit the public works truck and the police vehicles, right? So we have that one top up from expense, go ahead and get that taken care of. And this year, we still have our annual lease obligation amount that, and we'll have that not just next year, but every year to come, we're going to have to pay a certain amount for that lease, which is about forty thousand dollars.
Okay, so how much could you possibly, you could take seventy seven thousand dollars out? I mean.
It's going to be.
We're able to do the lease. In the current budget, how much can you take out of this budget? That's what it amounts. Once again, we're doing a lot, we have any.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be about. I don't want to say anything because that, I know the numbers are still changing and we're waiting on that to come in. Um that's about the outfit cost. They uh pulled the last video that we had from. I think it's more to the tune of like the outfit cost for something around eleven thousand. Eleven three twenty five, so that's about all we're, I mean, and then everything else is going to be lease cost on, you know, and that's going to be an annual expense. So I mean, if we're going to go with that program, I would just say we probably need to think about increasing taxes to cover that leasing program, because we know we're going to have that expense every year, that's not going to change, you know? I mean, for the first year to get it off the ground, you know, you theory you could do a transfer from undesigned to cover that cost, but. You know, we're going to have that expense that comes up every year, so um just something. But, you know, we're going to have that expense that comes up every year. So just something. Want to kind of put that out there to think about is that it's, it's not going to go away. We'll, we'll have it every single year. So. That's where it's a little bit harder to say, you know, we pull from reserves to, to cover that. Because it is something we know is going to happen every year. So. Just something to consider in this. And that's, I mean, we're probably talking a penny because, you know, one penny generates thirty-eight thousand and some change. And, you know, we're talking around forty thousand per year for those five vehicles for the lease cost. So.
I have no intentions of raising taxes this year.
So then I guess we have to, that's where we have to kind of figure out how we're going to pay for that. So then the question is, I mean, for the first year to get it off the ground, you can transfer from undesignedated fund balance and cover that first cost. Cause and then, but we just would have to know next budget cycle will be sitting in here again, and we'll probably have that same conversation about.
Because, I mean, we're up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars already. And everybody's predicting.
That'll be worse.
Got to go with something, but. The tax increase I was like is. But hey, it's nobody's fault. They're all for not boot capital out there. But I said two, three years ago, I'm there to get it. You can go and continue your services. You got to pay.
Capital not related to non-referring expenses, but that is talking about the lease ongoing yearly lease expenses. That has to be in, but that can't be something.
I'm just saying, we would have put capital out there. Now we cannot.
See, the reason why the, because we have, you know, the capital improvement plan, but the thing is, you know, making the plan is one thing, but then sticking to it's another because you have to reflect that allocation every year. And when the budget's tight every year like it has been, it's just, you know, you can't, when, that's, that's usually the first thing to get cut is, well, we're just not going to put away towards that this year. But over time, then you just don't have any money sitting there. So you're behind on your, on your plan. So I think that's kind of. You know, at some point it catches up because, you know, we can defer and defer and defer raising taxes where they need to be to pay for what we're providing. And it's just, it's one of those things that, I mean, if we use a CIP to pay for vehicles, we have to be willing to put that money aside each year to build up to that purchase. I mean, because it doesn't just show up that year. I mean, you have to put aside a little bit at a time. And that was the idea behind the CIP was to incrementally, you know, put aside a little bit of money in each department. So then you build up, you have that money there to make the purchase. But the problem is like year after year, that's what gets cut out of the budget and that money doesn't get set aside. And we don't, you know, it comes time to make that purchase, we don't have money there. So. I, I'm hopeful, I mean, with the lease program, I mean, it keeps the fleet newer, should keep the vehicle maintenance cost a lot lower. And it keeps them on a more regular replacement cycle, but we just have to account for it. I mean, we could, we could take that forty thousand that we're putting towards the lease and we can say, well, we're not doing the lease program. But we got, we put it towards the capital improvement program. It's a budget for those same items. And then we're talking years down the road before we'd even get them because we have to incrementally budget to get to that. That's just kind of the challenge. So I mean, that's where the leasing program, we have immediate needs for vehicles and vehicles that need to be replaced. It allows us to take care of those and keep the budget relatively under control. But it's, it's just a matter of, we haven't put money aside each year for the CIP like we should have been doing. Just because that's always what ends up kind of getting whittled out of the budget process. And it's understandable because that's kind of the, that's kind of the easiest thing to pull out because it's not an immediate thing. You say, oh, well, we're, we're, we'll deal with it next year. We'll, you know, kick the can down the road and look at this as an expense next year. But eventually, we cross that line where we can't, you know, you can't keep pulling from reserves and we can't just, I mean, we have to come up with that money somehow. That's where the tax increase, because we don't have many other revenue sources. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the challenge to maintain service delivery. I mean, the, the, I think that's the biggest challenge in all these budgets. And then we start talking about infrastructure investments. And, you know, that's a whole other ballgame. But I'm hopeful with the American Rescue Plan, hopefully those funds can be utilized to that, that will help with that substantially. You know, that, I mean, that, that's really, that's an unusual opportunity that none of us probably predicted, you know, we would get that kind of money potentially that comes in. But that's something, you know, that's not going to happen. That's probably once in a lifetime kind of thing that that kind of money comes in from the federal government to help out. So, yeah, just some things to kind of think through, but I wanted to make sure I'm mentioning that because it is, if we go with the leasing program, we're going to have that recurring costs. If we don't go with the leasing program, it'll be a couple of years before we can purchase some of these vehicles, you know, following the capital plan. And our, our vehicle maintenance costs are going to continue to go up. So at some point, we're going to spend more on maintaining these vehicles than it would cost us just to put the money aside. Or to pay for the, the lease agreement. So I just think that's important in the whole discussion to kind of bring that out. So.
Well, let's not forget the previous four years ago, all the entire fleet of cars they have right now. Let's not forget that. The option is there to do the same thing with this lease, in my opinion, so what the money's for. I, I didn't like it, but because it was such a significant expense at that time, I was on the board.
So ideally, like with the, the thing is, so you could wait and wait and wait. And I think that's probably what happened in the past. And then you get to the point where the whole fleet needs to be replaced. At the same time, you have that astronomical expense to buy a whole new fleet of police cars, right? Or you could go with the lease agreement where it's a more, it's a steady kind of thing. It's forty, you know, thousand dollars between public works and police to keep them on a regular replacement interval. So all of a sudden, you don't get into a budget year and you're absolutely faced with having to, you know, fork out three hundred thousand dollars for replacement tire fleet. So it incrementally budgets for, and I think it's a much more stable way to do it and reliable way to do it. But our maintenance costs, I mean, just what they've been this year on the current fleet, I mean, it just continues to increase. And it's just not, that's not a sustainable approach. So, but I think that's like, probably what happened in the past was. The cars got to the point where all of a sudden you're faced with, you got to replace a bunch of cars all at once. And you got to, I mean, you're paying cash upfront buying them all, you know? And then I think we have an, we have an opportunity right now to, you know, basically what if, I mean, when you get done outfitting a police car, we're talking, that's about thirty-four thousand dollars per car. Like if we just bought it outright, you know? So our lease cost is for three police vehicles is less than we would pay to buy one outright, you know? Including outfitting and doing all that. So I think that's where this is a big opportunity for us is that, you know, we can get three new ones as opposed to one for the same price that it would cost us to buy just one and outfit it. So, you know, and you figure the other ten thousand of that or so is, is public works. And I mean, they're running a nineteen ninety-four truck over there that's been broken down for a month and they can't fix to haul the debris up. So it's just, you know, thinking about deferring things, I mean, to have a ninety-four truck over there that they've somehow managed to keep running for that long is, is commendable. So, but we can't rely on that as an option forever, you know? I mean, we have to replace some of those things to get them up to date. So.
You can't find a vehicle.
I mean, everything has a lifespan.
Adjust the budget and then next time we have budget, we'll look at it.
Yes, yeah.
I think we need to ask a question in planning inspection. I'm getting a lot of detail. This is a yes or no. Is everybody happy?
I think he's been doing an awesome job and. He's wearing a lot of hats and he's doing very well on both sides. I don't think either side has suffered. And, you know, he's, he's, he's not one of these guys that sits around. He wants to be busy and I, I have a lot of respect for that. Any other questions or comments on the planning inspection? Public Works.
Yeah, we did. And I mean, based it off of, uh. Um, I think we were in. Uh, I'd have to give it, I mean, it's been a couple of months ago. I, I can get back to you on that with what we looked at. Yeah, I think it would be, I think we would be passing up a good opportunity. I mean, I worked really hard to get this grant for the town. And the whole premise of the grant is to reduce some of our waste stream. Once we have the yard waste program up and running and we have our own truck, the idea is to divert some of that stream into, into mulch we can use on the trails and parks and everything else. It's an opportunity though to get us a skid steer, but, you know, they're not just going to buy us a skid steer and just for the fun of buying one. I mean, this, that's where the inline chipper comes in is that we're converting that, a portion of that vegetative waste stream into mulch. And it's recycling that instead of, you know, having the cost to go up there to dump it, transportation, environmental impact of doing that, it's a repurposing of the debris. So that's the whole premise of the grant. I mean, I think it's a really good opportunity. We definitely would benefit tremendously from having a skid steer. You know, not just for the, the yard waste recycling aspect, but for a lot of the road work and street maintenance, that would be extremely beneficial to the department to have that. I mean, you can buy all sorts of attachments that can go on there, whether it's a sweeper or whether, you know, to sweep out where you're doing road repairs. And I think America probably speaks to some of the value on the, on the skid steers as well. Well, I know, I mean, but it's, it, but you also look at. Well, they, they only have a certain amount of need for mulch, like either on the mulch trail or parks and stuff like that. So I mean, they can produce what they need, but at least it's, it's diverting a portion of the stream into a, it's recycling something that otherwise is just going to go be piled up and disposed of. And we're going to pay disposal costs or pay time to haul it up there, fuel cost, everything else. You know, it's a opportunity I hope we can pursue because I, I did, you know, work hard to, to secure that grant. I understand that there's a little bit of upfront cost, but then again, that, I mean, this is a one-time cost. We're not buying a skid steer every year, you know?
Is your intention, uh, like in some towns where they commit in on a pile of leaves and a pile of branches and small limbs and stuff like that? To chip that in the process of the pick?
Yeah, there's the, there's a potential, and even during times when, like if they go out and cut a tree down, they can bring that hook to the truck and chip right into the truck. Like some of the tree kind of companies do, they could chip right into it, be able to use that mulch. And that way, R could be that debris is brought back there to public works and then it's shipped when they have time to work on chipping it. So divert a portion of the waste stream, but it gives us, you know, the opportunity, we could chip roadside and convert that right to mulch, which is a good option.
It's going to take twice as long to do the pickup. But I, because you got to see, you watch these state check people, there's two or three people being chipped. Because it's such an awkward process. As far as recycling, yeah, it would be nice to have the malls, but when you take them to the type of landfill we have to recycle. Just by putting, you know, the batch of rock back in here, that's a total waste of labor. I can't stand the skid. I'm all, I'm all, I'm all on lockout. I won't move down here. I hate it to sell it. It's the most useful piece of equipment I ever had in life. I simply can't put anything on the front. But. You say you can buy a brand new rubber tire, skid, for thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think we're comfortable on that cost. So, and I can get the specifics on it, but then I, I think. These people, I mean, the whole premise of this grant application is to reduce some of the waste stream, yard waste. So, I mean, if we're not going to get the chipper, we can't get the skid steer. I mean, they have to, there has to be a purpose for them to fund the skid steer.
I mean, that, that, that chipper can be just a waste of money. So you say you cannot allow the skid?
Without buying, I mean, that's the whole premise of the grant application. So. Well, I mean, I, I think we would benefit tremendously from the skid steer. I mean, I, I do think. I don't think the availability of mulch is necessarily going to be the same as it was at some sites that we were able to get it from before. This would allow us to generate mulch. And, and the way I would envision it is like if they can kind of use their discretion to get material, like if you've got good trees that, you got cedar or something like that. I mean, that would be ideal to chip that. So they could kind of use some discretion in how they would utilize that to get the best quality mulch out of it. But, you know, it's, they, they go hand in hand. I mean, you kind of got to have one with the other. And that's, that's the premise of the grant. So I do think it's a big opportunity because otherwise, I mean, I do think this is a piece of equipment that, that we do need. And I saw even after like hurricanes and all that, a lot of the debris contractors that come in and have skid steers they utilize to shift things around while they're doing that. So it would be a huge benefit to us after a storm as well. So I think if we could get, if we can get a chipper and get a, a skid steer half off. I mean, you know, I, I think that's a good opportunity to, you know, to take advantage of. So I'd hate to see us pass that up, but, you know, I definitely understand that that's the direction. So. I just would ask for that direction. So I could let them know. I have to, it's been a while for, since I.
Yeah. I, I tell you what, I'm not challenging you, but I, I want to see. Especially in angry, I want to talk about. Northern hydraulics and northern tool. It's got enough on the plate over there, Zach, without the chip, chip, chip limbs. They can buy that much. I go over here to power company, there's three piles of the day. I cut my tractor, I put a buffer in there, I get all on one. It's always available. I thought you'd give the grant, but. Twenty thousand dollars.
Women by law. More questions, concerns about the public work? Power bill. Questions about the power bill?
Problem exactly, but we cannot sustain our paving needs. Zach, what is the cost of that one stretch of the boat of say, um, drive that you get that to do?
Give me a moment. Give me a moment now, let me pull up the contract.
I can't remember. Seventy-eight thousand dollars, no. There's never gonna be enough to do something. They're like police cars, they're like police cars, just accumulating over time.
So, Buggs Town Drive, the cost is $28,768.74.
Your total paving project was?
Seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred eleven and fifty-four cents.
Would you say that's a whole paving project here?
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have been, because we put, we've been taking more money out of reserves to cover, you know, to cover these costs. I'd say we've definitely been doing more paving, much more paving lately than we have been in the past, so. You know, in terms of a normal cost, you know, it might be, it just depends on how much road you do, you know? I mean, if you split your seventy-eight down the middle and you do a thirty or forty thousand dollar project in the fall, a thirty, forty thousand dollar in the spring, that's how you stay within your, your allocated power bill amount, but that doesn't get a whole lot of road paved, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would say that there's a lot of places in town that, that could stand to be addressed. And that need to be addressed, but it's just what we're able to do within the financial resources that we have.
If we, if we ever did take over this golf and dog and drive. Would that increase our power bill?
It would increase it some, I mean, I don't know the exact length on it, but it, we'd have to get that resurveyed and then put into that formula that they use, but I think the increase, I mean, if I had to guess, maybe a thousand, two thousand dollars, something like that, would probably be the actual annual benefit. But there's also a lot of other benefit to it, just that being what a lot of people assume is a town street and it's not. But I definitely want to see it brought up to the appropriate NCDOT standard for us to consider it, so.
But I probably wouldn't approve of that.
Yeah, but over time, I mean, that's, you know, that's kind, as long as power bill exists, that's a one or two thousand dollars every year in perpetuity that, you know, we, we would receive that as long as the power bill money keeps coming in, so. That is, I mean, eventually it pays for itself, but I think maybe in, in the benefit it gets, because everybody assumes that's a town road. And assumes those are town potholes that go unaddressed. There's definitely a public perception thing, but I don't, I think it needs to be brought to the appropriate NCDOT standard and for us to consider engaging in that conversation. And I know Cleveland McKimmon Creed has been working with Swain and Associates to develop a, a cost estimate for them on what needs to be done. So, if they share that information with us, we'll definitely pass that along, so everybody can kind of take a look, but I would say we wouldn't. I don't, I wouldn't think it would be wise for us to entertain taking it over unless it's brought up to an appropriate standard. You know, because I wouldn't want to take over something that immediately we're gonna, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get into the standards.
It has to be surveyed out. The road was out there, but it was just all parked, you know, it's about a hundred feet wide. That, that's a can of worms right now.
There's also a lot of other things with easements that go across there, where the lines for the package plant and all that. So we would definitely want to see, to know exactly what it is we're looking at there. In every aspect, and, and who's responsible if the pavement's cut, and who's responsible for repairing it, you know? What provisions are in place in those easements, what are those easements allowed for? So there's definitely a lot that we'd want to know, so we'll keep you posted if we hear anything from McKimmon Creed or Swain Associates, so.
So do you like a seventy thousand dollars or a window?
No, but it's what the power bill allocation is, so, you know, anything above and beyond that, it either has to come from reserves, or it's gotta be a tax increase to pay for it, so.
What we can take out of reserve for, for something like this safely, Zach, safely? How much should we take out of reserve?
So maybe we might tell you. So right now, I think we're sitting at three twenty-four, six twelve in the operating reserve. And as we're going into hurricane season, I mean, so we've got four ninety-seven, and then we have two hundred fifty thousand. So we have seven hundred forty-seven thousand that is sitting there just for if we have a hurricane, basically, we need that money. Which I think is a, it's a pretty strong amount, I think it's a good amount to have in there. However, you know, after storms, we were burning through over a hundred thousand dollars a week, so we could, you know, we could burn through that pretty quickly. I don't, I don't like to see us deplete that too much, especially going into hurricane season, and just not knowing. I mean, let's say we have a storm that comes along, and it doesn't end up being a FEMA reimbursed storm, but we have costs that we have to cover, and we don't get reimbursed for it, it's just, you know, one of those things that it'd be good to have that money in there. And I think, you know, maybe, you know, get through the fall project with that seventy-eight, and if that money's there, you know, we will get a spring project in 2022 and pull some. Hopefully by then, you know, we replenish some of those reserves, but at the same time, hopefully some of that American Rescue Plan money has come in, and then we shouldn't even have to worry about it, because we should, I mean, we could do a lot of paving with that kind of money. That should open up a lot of possibilities for us.
All right, no other questions, comments? We'll move on to public grounds, utilities and buildings.
Yeah, the single most, single most phone calls I get is people are at love with these blue signs. They are, they are loving their signs. I wish there was a way to, to go ahead and bite the bullet and get them all done. It's, it beautifies the town. In my opinion, it stands out as different than any of the other towns. I get more comments about that than anything, honestly, Zach. Good luck, you can come up with that, it's a beautiful sign.
Yeah, they, they look really good, and, I mean, I definitely look forward to when we can have them all. Switched out what I factored in, based on some of our conversations, I did factor in doing half the signs. I mean, you could take that amount and, and double that to do them all. So that's just, you know, that's what we'd be looking at.
Is that ninety-nine oh eight, is that the cost per hat, or there are other things in that also?
Oh, this year I was just, like, if we go that route, I was gonna really focus on doing the street signs out of that. But, I mean, there are some other things, I mean, we could have some other costs that are in there, out for signs and everything, but. So if you just took the ninety, the.
But the ninety-nine oh eight is, that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's half.
It would be twice that amount.
Yes, we're looking at nineteen thousand eight hundred sixteen to do every sign in town that's out there, so. And that was something too, and I think.
That the post?
Yeah, that's post, I did. What's that?
Why do you need the post? If you got a post out there, Ken, Bushes or something, bracket, if something comes out, okay?
I mean, I'm factoring in, a lot of these posts that we have out there, I mean, we have some that are in decent shape, but there's some that are just like, I mean, we got one over at Bay Shore that, like boats, that actually has curved to it at the corner of Club and, and Buggs Town Drive, yeah. So it's, it's just one of those, you know, we, if we're gonna do it, I would, I would recommend we do it right, and we do, we make all of them look as good as the ones that we've done, would just be my recommendation. I mean, we do the, the post, a copper cap, white, you know, paint the post white, and then do, change up. Because the other thing is, we're supposed to be meeting the reflectivity standard on these, so. Stop signs are supposed to have that reflectivity stand, they're supposed to have the prismatic sheeting, same thing with the street signs, they're supposed to be a certain letter height and everything else, so we've spec that out for all the signs that we've replaced. So that's just where I would, if we're gonna do it, I would switch it, you know, get them all, they look, I mean, all the same, they're all cohesive and it uniform across town, so. That would be my recommendation if we were, you know, and if we could, and that's what I put half in this year, could do half of the town this year, or maybe, you know, we tackle the worst spots this year, you know, in this coming fiscal year, you know? We look at the ones that really, they don't have any reflectivity left on the signs. We go ahead and knock those out, and then the second year, we do the ones that are remaining, until we have everything replaced, so.
Since you want to have it on, on the agenda of the grant, the chipper. Well, I'd add the sign, same thing, if there's any interest on board of making them uniform.
Okay.
Personally, I love a sign, but I'm gonna start it, less of that money to go ahead and do a lot of comes. It just gets confusing now, green signs, metal posts, I mean, blue signs, I mean, maybe, maybe the public needs to call now.
Yeah, I think we've had, I mean, nothing but positive feedback on the, on the signs, but, uh, you know, the ones that were replaced, the majority of those were Hurricane Four's damaged signs, so we took that opportunity because we're utilizing funding coming in, we're able to upgrade those signs. And that, that was a good opportunity to, to bring, and, and that's, in the past, that's how the towns approach this, is incremental. You know, the worst signs are the ones that get addressed. I think, you know, if we do half of the street signs and focus on the worst ones that don't meet the reflectivity standards, that don't have the prismatic sheeting, there's a lot to have, like, viking growing on them, and they've got mold on them and everything, this would be a good opportunity to hit those worst ones, and that would probably spread it pretty evenly throughout the town, and then the second year, hit the remainder of them. That's where I was kind of factoring into this budget, was, you know, doing it kind of an incremental thing, not just biting off, you know, nineteen thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars right, you know, in one year, so.
Any other questions?
Can we go back to, to the police department side or either the other side? There's two things that I'm gonna read a program up, sorry, I apologize for that. There are two programs I'd like to see implemented through the police department. One of the things that's been years and used in the neighborhood, what? Maybe ask money to that. There's a new program called. Well, this is, each day a pre-range, at a pre-ranged time of day, at the computer on that house, whether it be with a lady, individual, check on them. If that happens, it's a call, or if they actually want to happen, they answer the call, it's just a number, but, so they're okay. And that fails to happen, that you know, I might cause a personal list. To get a check on them, if they don't, then the police department automatically dispatch to that. To check on that individual. We're living in the neighborhood of half of communities where we have a lot of retirees here, a lot more witnesses. This bitch is seven hundred fifty dollars, seven hundred fifty dollars. Are you okay for the break? I encourage you to look these up on the computer. I, I limited it, and then what I, and it's the people raised over. Especially the family member, individuals who, that will now could get to, check on them, and, uh, it just works out very good. Seven fifty dollars, that's really, seriously. And if we do another seven hundred fifty dollars to help that program, neighborhood watch to keep, or community to watch, to. I would simply, I'm trying to take that ball and roll with. The RAF two program, there's really nothing that people have to do, so I'm actually does for them. None of the people here have something they can depend upon. I mean, I'm not, I had to, but it, my mind popped up too late, but anyway. So we can look at fifteen hundred dollars somewhere in the budget.
Is that what the neighborhood watch?
I would, now, that, that is the one money you could. But it's already been implemented already, I've never been involved with this watch over here, but it's a good store.
I don't think this watch over here is even still operational. I bet, I'm pretty much just banning yours.
Well. Yeah, but keep in mind that this back end, when the individual is actually getting cars, CVs, and patrol.
Yes.
That's not good.
How's that work?
Now, now what it is, is basically, if you see something, you say something. It gets people in different streets, I need special part. The organizer, a little section over there, so people look after everybody else, you have a phone call. If you go downtown, there is no, you will come back a lot later. It consists of police department, knowing what's wrong, not what's correct. So that goes to hang, correctly, every city more times, they call the police. A lot of park, country clubs, sorbians, what they can do, they organize a little section, but takes the people out of the car. I apologize for that, I already talked to him about that, and was talking to Zach about it as well. So I'm taking these two programs, we're doing very well, and, I mean, it's not fifteen hundred dollars a year, I mean, we're like, we shouldn't even have to discuss the cost of it anyway.
I can give you multiple instances where the are you okay program, just on my street.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that. It's something I have, if I read this one, this.
Seven hundred fifty dollars is nothing to say to these people.
So I hope you all agree with me on this, we did something very simple, very easy, entirely. I'll get a lot of follow-up, folks, a lot of follow-up on the neighborhood watch period, but they didn't have, shouldn't have needed everyone. Pretend to move, move in, it's my ball, they go to address these people, welcome to the neighborhood. Give them a sense of security for their own relative. Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up, but, I'm being encouraged, that's people.
This is the program, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And different levels you can look at, but I suggest we go with whatever different level there is. No annual fees, lifetime frequent, seven tenths of four.
Zach, I think that'd be very, um, I'm just, I mean, seven hundred fifty dollars, we can all have. We all know, just on people.
Well, the issue I have with this thing is, I put all the numbers I want to hear. I get more phone calls from unsolicited things, and I want for people to take that note.
Look, you have to go in, you have to fill a piece of paper, say you will be on the call. If you get in that number, that needs to be called. So whatever number you include in your, say, hey, I'm going to be on a paper over here, it comes to the police department, it comes to town hall, whether that's attention, or commission, all the contact information, so the family member or their neighbor, and it's real simple. It's, it's, it's not a, very easy, and whatever number you want to put. That's it. Again, I always put the chief, and also just, Zach, but, it's our work. But it's a team, that's it. Hey, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
It's all right, what's about? All right, nothing else on that. Last up would be the environmental emergency preparation.
Questions, Zach, have you identified any, if you're a client, or are we moving this book?
Yeah, we have all that worked out. Um, I'd have to get back to you on that, it's, it's awesome. Yes, that's correct.
And you voted the twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
But you don't have much to do.
Uh, I do, I can give with you, miss more specifics, if you want more details on that.
All right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I would like, I mean, I like to know, cause what's going on? We haven't even discussed the number of late late pickups. This week's the last one we got for.
Correct. Yep, this is the last one to that, so.
Do, is that a budget issue? If it, to me it is, if we go with four late, if four late pickups, is that twenty five thousand dollars?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I kind of projected into that, um. I would say that, you know, if, if there's the desire to get to the four pickups, I do think we need that direction, I think that is a budget item, so. Uh, if that's the desire to go back to four, uh, yeah, I think now's an appropriate time to indicate that, that's the route we're going.
Unless it's the year, I'm, I'm good with state, but I'll tell you the reason why. Uh, originally we started, the two went to four, went three and then went to four, and then to think of, over, more popular is, is. I think, I don't know the size of the piles that I, I don't know that I generate anymore with two pickups a year than I do. You know, fall or spring, those are the perfect ones. And, uh, what you end up is, the town look like a mess four times a year instead of two times a year because the people just do not follow that ten day rule, you know, the piles spring up, I'd like to tell you.
I have this really, really big, I'll tell you why, all reasons, because this town consists of a huge number of farmland residents. Not every time can they come down, those two times, that's one issue, but one, one very issue. I don't know about, uh, decent trucks, but the least amount of time you use those things, they deteriorate, so. That, that boom truck needs to be used, and four times a year is, is, uh, is nothing. And, uh, I agree with you, Mike, on the, on the amount of debris stuff, but. You gotta, you gotta be able to cater to, to everybody, having on that, it's part time.
I think, I think four times, you know.
I'm good with that, especially us, Archie got twenty five thousand.
That's, that's, that's one of the services we've been. A lot of the four times, the residents do very much like. Yep. Yeah, I mean, about two months, year, after the year, she's requesting more, because some people like so much. But I think four's enough, I think, I think every three months is enough, but I, I would for four rather than just twice a year.
Yeah, I agree, four, had a minimum of four, I, I originally thought six, but I guess four would do.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, also, if we do four, you know, keep them down, get there, uh, throughout the year, so if you do two times a year, like, I understand. There's not a lot, it's huge, but if you do more, it means that's, be less, probably less, you probably have less pickups.
Yeah, it's, we got four regular pickups, but we get a storm between pickups. Are we gonna? Make that a fifth, or are we gonna move up to fourth? Are we gonna, we did this flat, I think it was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and I think that's, like, that's a good point to bring up.
I think we adjusted what we had, we still had two more, rather than do on these, to be back or something like that.
With us having our, it's gonna depend on the type of storm too, but with us having our truck and now somebody to drop the truck. Um, if we have, like, a tropical storm comes through and it's below, you know, FEMA category, but there's still debris out there. Ideally, we can get out there and do that, and we'll probably, you know, on something that's small like that, we'll monitor and house loads and all that stuff in case it does end up being, but we'll keep a log, all that stuff for those smaller storms. Uh, but what I'll probably do is, like, we have something come through, I'll reach out to the board, just kind of see if there's a consensus. We'll go ahead and do that before we put word out, if we're going that route, so.
Then why not create a, through FEMA, when you do your list, FEMA, mines, it says list of equipment used, and then they subsidize use for. Painting, or use of our vehicle, correct?
Yes, yeah, we could do, uh, we can pay, I believe it's on the disposal cost, that we could do labor, uh, use of equipment and disposal costs, and I think you can factor all that in, so.
They got that mileage and all that stuff.
Yeah, and that's, that's where we do starting mileage and the mileage, uh, because I want to see all that, exactly where it went, final disposition site, all that information, so.
Uh, one thing, uh, since I'm obsequying the minority on the number of pickups, could you have, uh, when I was zoning, what I used to do is, these people that put out the piles ahead of time, I gave copies of the letter above the ornaments to the maintenance crew, and when they're driving around and they see a pile outside the window, they can put that on the floor. Maybe that'll come back on a, because what happens, you, you see one pile, and the next day, you go out there and there'll be three more up the street because people say, well, it must be time to put it out, and they don't look at the thing, it's ten days. And we, we went through the, put ten days, just so we wouldn't have piles laying out in the driveway all year round. So if they could do something like that.
Yeah, and right, uh, Mike Bishop goes around now, he'll send letters if they've got it out, and then also if they're putting debris in front of the vacant lot, he's actually putting the sign in front of the pile that says, we're not gonna pick this pile up. And that has helped out a bunch, because a lot of times we put that sign in there and the pile disappears, so. Uh, that, that is a good thing that we, that we started doing, uh, and we'll get pictures of each of the piles too, so that's definitely helped out. Um, especially on these vacant lots where people like to go and try to dump there, um, and a lot of times just people don't want it from their house, but, um, that's kind of curfew out of that, so.
The time to leave a pickup over here, and they'll dump a load on the vacant lot.
So Mike Bishop actually.
I went to the chief, the guy, he got really, he said, I live here on my lot, I was out here, how long you lived here, buddy? Come down the street and just pick a random lot, dump it.
I do know that Mike, um, caught somebody on Bonita Street the other day, uh, trying to dump, so, and they had to load it back up, and, uh, it was, it had spilled off the truck, but it quickly got back on the truck, so. So it is good, because I know he's out there, he's watching it very close.
Probably the same guy dumped it on the last time.
I mean, it's, it'd be nice, we have a piece of property where we can do debris drop off. And.
They do. Yeah. And draw, so much. You pick that down there.
He's actually good on the bottom.
Yeah. Actually go to his road a lot of year, you know, load it, it's, uh.
You get in the container, yeah. Where's you at, and to give you a room.
And comments on environmental emergency?
So do we need a motion to go through the board, or is that?
Well, Bill, Budgie's gonna get the numbers and all that. But he said that included what the, uh, amount was, so we'll be fine with that, that's just a matter, do we want them to be picked? If there's nothing else on environmental emergency, then I'll just ask Zach, do you need any more direction other than the questions in terms of they've given you for the next meeting?
No, I think we should be good, I just, I just verified that, that amount in there for the, uh, debris disposal cost, that'll be some questions, I'm, I'm confident on that. I'd rather err on the, I saw this go around just to make sure that, because we don't know, um, or, or we're looking at it, especially when we're taking it over, we're gonna be doing it, uh, we'll see how, and it, with the increase in the number of pickups, kind of see how that works out, uh. Just to. So. Right now, like, the difference we'd be looking at. I think we're about twenty four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars sure, based on those changes, like we talked about today. Um, so we're less than a penny, uh, so, I mean, we're maybe like three quarters of cent or something like that, is what we're looking at, um, so, just to give you all an idea, based on those conversations, if we've kind of, and, and that's not putting anything, I mean, I had put, and, and I've updated this since we sent this out, but I put a little bit more in parks and rec. Um, nowhere near enough to, you know, cover what we're talking about, but I did put three thousand for park maintenance and three thousand for park improvements. Uh, and I was thinking of the kayak storage racks that we talked about. Okay.
It's a, it's a separate thing, uh, ones out in Park City are overfilled. And we can do it much less, but I can get it. So I come up to you and add to the, the.
Uh. So that was adding four thousand dollars is what I'd added, and that, I just did that the other day, so it was, I know that's not as much as what we're talking about, but at least I was trying to put a little bit in there. Um, especially, you know, we talked about, you know, replacing some of the pitting tables, adding some, and then also trying to do those kayak storage racks, which I think we would, if we could do that, maybe at two street end parks, you know, one in Old Cape Carter, one in Bay Shore, just kind of see how that program goes. Um, I think that'd be pretty neat, so, I know that's something that got up in Morehead City that, um, I'm seeing, so.
But, but to, to upgrade the new part, which is walk. So if you're coming forward, that's what we're. Painting a building, you know, the issue you're talking about, people are buying. Ball pit's taken care of. So the fence is the main thing, right?
Yeah, the fence, and then painting the building, and then put some, uh, some parking spaces down there, and that's pretty much it, and then we could open it up. Um, a little bit of, probably a little bit of signage down there, uh, just with the park rules and, you know.
So then you can open it up, uh, we're trying to do it by property.
And I think the fencing cost is, is so much, because I think we want to probably try to run it along the bulkhead in some spots and keep people from, just, I mean, they might climb over it, but at least trying to contain them, so we don't have people jumping off the bulkhead and doing stuff like that. We'll put some signage up there too, to make sure we account for, you know, no swimming, diving, that kind of stuff, to try to address that stuff and try to predict what people might try to do, so.
Yeah, the problem over there is people docking. Commercial guys, man, they think that four, they have one on Parker, slow to dirt boat site. Simple part. A few parking places, a fence, two big next time over, job.
Yeah, something to start, I mean, we, we spent the money to buy it, people know that we spent the money to buy it, they need to see something.
If we get it done.
Transpire down there.
And get it done this fiscal year, that would be the way to go.
Yeah, so all, what I'll do is, uh, for the May Board of Commissioners, we have that as a budget, they've been covering that, um. And I think we kind of looked at the entire, like, the bulkhead, I think, for that amount, we talked about the last budget meeting, I think we should be able to get it pretty good shape, enough that we can go to the park, feel comfortable with it, so. And that'll just kind of be a down the road, but the bulkhead that's there now actually has like four layers of bulkhead. So it's actually got like four different sets of bulkheads there, so it's pretty, it's pretty sturdy.
Alright, so, how much time you need, if you want to have another meeting, uh?
Oh.
Next week, I'm not available Tuesday or Wednesday.
Got a Thursday?
Tuesday morning, we'll be back on Wednesday afternoon.
So next Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday's back. About Friday? Or we go into next week?
But the following week, I'm gonna be, which is our board meeting, I will be gone. Monday through Thursday, if that. I'll be tuning in the Burt board meeting on the computer.
About Tuesday.
Tuesday next week.
What you got? I'm not available Tuesday.
Okay.
I don't know, yeah, I'm gonna be out Tuesday and Wednesday next week.
I'm gonna be gone all week next week to the fiscal.
So we still, we're still waiting on our, some of our property liability, right? Um, and we're still waiting on enterprise for exact numbers.
Monday week.
We got our board meeting on the.
We can.
We follow on, we got, the week of the board meeting, I'm gonna be out the tenth through the thirteenth, Monday through Thursday. On the, I'd be available that week, be Friday.
Well, we could, uh. See what we can handle, see how thick the agenda's gonna be for the board meeting. Just have a long night, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it at the, either that or just.
And see another day afterwards, after that, that following week.
Well, if there's any follow-up, if we had it in conjunction with the board meeting, is there any follow-up? We got the Joe meeting.
Right, so we don't do it then. And I think Zach will take some vacation toward the end of May, so I don't want to impede your ability to do that.
Yeah, that's almost, the sooner we can come back and go through this, because I mean, we're pretty close right now in terms of, I think our numbers are pretty accurate, it's just, you know, we got to figure out what we do about that twenty four thousand, uh, whether that's, uh, you know, do we just do like a point seven five, you know, uh, three quarters of a cent to address that, because we know we have that recurring lease cost.
No, what we do is we make our list between now and then, what's coming up.
Yeah, and I think that's what, just keeping in mind what those items are, to try.
I have, I have, I say, I mean, I think, Mayor, we have to have a board meeting prior to the next one, I tell you why. We have not voted on leasing these police cars. Nor have we voted on this grant, so those two issues alone are major players. So I think it's, it's only approach we have to take in person. I mean, excuse me, Board of Commissioners, please, first.
Well, given everybody sort of not available next week, well, like I say, if we can have a light agenda, unless it's absolutely necessary, we can try to address most of it that we can on the tenth at our board meeting. And go from there. See if we can pick a day, all that week.
The tenth, I'm gonna be virtual for the meeting, but Tuesday or Wednesday, although I'll be gone, I could get on virtual.
Okay.
Needs be, we need to meet one of those mornings, I'm sure I could arrange it. You know.
Was that, there's no even cell phone, so I'll take a chance going with the condition of my mom's.
So we're shooting for the May tenth, uh, and we'll just do it in conjunction with the.
Yeah, and we'll see, we can, we resolve then, and then we still got time, so.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I just, uh.
We'll go from there, if we need to have a date later that week, we get together, we'll, we'll discuss it Monday night, how's that? Yeah, so, see what we can resolve, and if not, we decide, correct, we decide, we want to, everybody, okay, everybody? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn today.
So move.
Second, all in favor, thank you gentlemen for your time.